For our City Council, public hearings will now be called to order. Madam Clerk.
Counselors Kadim.
Yeah.
Dionne?
Here.
Kilby?
Yes, here.
La Libbidi Laboue? Lee?
Here.
Peckham?
Here.
Pelletier?
Yeah.
Ferreira?
Here.
And President Ponti?
Here. Just so everybody knows, our Council Vice President will be joining us shortly, a little closer to 7:00 PM for our full council meeting tonight. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. We are in the public hearings of the Forover City Council. Just want to make a notice that it is hereby given that this is a virtual public hearing that is held by the Forover City Council today, June 9th, 2020, here through Forover Government Television, the website frgtv.fredtv.us, to hear all persons interested and wishing to be heard on the following items. First item before us is pole attachment and underdoo conduits. Is there a motion to open?
Motion to open.
The public hearing has been made by Councilor Ferreira, seconded by Councilor Pelletier. Roll call.
On opening the public hearings, Counselors Kadim?
Yes.
Dionne?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
La Libbidi Laboue? Lee?
Yes.
Peckham?
Yes.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Ferreira?
Yes.
President Ponti?
Yes. Madam Clerk, being as this is new singular wireless on all 12 of these pole locations, do we need to open the hearing for every single one?
It's the, the petitioner is the same, so I would say you can open hearing and there just are multiple locations. Do we have to make a motion for multiple locations, just take them all together?
But...
We basically have them listed as one public hearing.
Fair enough, so we'll, we'll...
Motion to open a public hearing on all locations?
Let's just, we'll cover it. Motion to open the public hearing on all public hearings, items 1 through 12, has been made by Councilor Kilby.
Second.
Seconded by Councilor Ferreira. Roll call.
Counselors Kadim?
Yes.
Dionne?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
La Libbidi Laboue? Lee?
Yes.
Peckham?
Yes.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Ferreira?
Yes.
And President Ponti?
Yes. The petitions of the new singular wireless PSC LLC DBA AT&amp;T Company to construct and maintain telecommunications wires and out in apparatus, including fiber optic cables, remotes, nodes, and pole top antennas, to be attached to Liberty National Grid utility pole location, as well as to install underground conduits for direct fiber cable as follows: 464 Bank Street, Pole 15; 100 Bardsley Street, Pole 6; 541 Broadway, Pole 11753395; 60 Freedom Street, Pole 3; 229 Freelove Street, Pole 149; 221 Lindsay Street, Pole 1084; 1485 Locust Street, Pole 2816; 1914 North Main Street, Pole 781; 229 Palmer Street, Pole 134916; 2110 Pierce Street, Pole 3-84; 920 Pine Street, Pole 36-1; and 699 Pleasant Street, which is an unmarked pole. This was the opportunity that was given to all, all persons interested and wishing to be heard, had to have reached out to the Clerk's office or sent a written correspondence. Madam Clerk, the only proponent that has wished to contact your office has been Attorney Edward Pear, who's joined us here today. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Attorney Pear, we'll open the floor up for you at this public hearing, which I'm assuming you represent AT&amp;T?
I do. Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the City Council, good evening. My name is Edward, oop, my name is Edward Perry. I'm an attorney at Brown Rudnick, One Financial Center, Boston, Massachusetts, just for the record. I've appeared before the Council on a number of occasions with respect to wireless on behalf of AT&amp;T. In this instance, as we did in 2018, we're seeking to attach small cell facilities to existing and replacement utility poles. So we're not installing any new poles, but National Grid takes the opportunity to allow us to replace some of their poles for them. All of the designs are the same and they're identical to the designs that this council approved in our last round. I believe we've done 12 sites previously back in 2018. The antenna itself is a 24-inch antenna. It's a canister antenna. It's 10 inches in diameter, so it mounts to the top of the utility pole. There is a radio equipment is installed within a, in equipment shroud so that the equipment is not exposed. That cabinet's 39 inches tall, by 23 inches wide, by 15 inches deep. There are electricity that feeds to the equipment cabinet, which then runs up to the antennas. So there's some cabling, which is all placed in conduit. We work with the DPW to deal with the electrical and the fiber installation. As I said, every one of these is identical, with the exception that the Bank Street location is an existing pole. We'll be attaching to that pole and not replacing it. The other 11 are all replacement poles in the same location as the existing poles, so we avoid the, the double pole issue that many municipalities deal with. There are some conditions that we had proposed to address double pole issues, fees and the like, and I have worked with the Solicitor's Office on those. With respect to the installation itself or any of the 12 locations, I'd be happy to answer any questions. I don't want to spend a lot of time dealing with, you know, what's in replication, if there are particular locations that are of interest, or any particular questions I'd be happy to answer.
Thank you very much for being as we're in a public hearing. Usually there's not many, we usually hold off on the questions, but due to the circumstances, are there any questions for Attorney Pear? Councilor Ferreira?
Yeah, the question I have, all the people that live around these locations, have you notified them or is it just this public hearing? Or have you had a conversation with any of those individuals, Attorney Pear?
We have, we have not had any independent conversations. We typically do this through the public hearing process. My understanding is the City Clerk did notify all abutters.
Right. I'm just wondering if you had gotten calls from any of the abutters?
I have not, I have not received any.
The underground conduits being buried, who's going to be doing that installation? And what kind of repair is going to be done around those areas?
Yeah, as I mentioned, we'll coordinate through the DPW if, in fact, we need to go underground. The fiber can go above ground. I think on many of these poles, electricity goes above ground. In instances where it's below ground, we'll coordinate and pull the necessary permits from DPW, and obviously AT&amp;T will be responsible to make sure that it's replaced in as good or better manner. And again, that's a condition we would expect to see, we have seen in the past from the city of Fall River.
Well, I see that, you know, with AT&amp;T, we have a company, a cable company in the city, but I know that AT&amp;T, Verizon, et cetera, that everyone's looking at doing expanded of cable, doing expansion, and they're doing it with fiber optics. They've done it in other states, and I think it's a higher internet quality if we're doing fiber optics, et cetera. You paying us for any of this? We're letting you use our poles? You don't use any money?
Oh, yes. Oh, yes, we are. Yeah, in the, so I'm not quite sure where we are, you know, decision-wise. We have discussed conditions which have, which were imposed on us last time and expect to be imposed on us this time. The FCC order does provide for remuneration to the city for managing the public right-of-way, and we fully expect that you will meet those maximums.
Well, we're a good city and we deserve, you know, good money here because, because we're a good city, and as much money as we can get, I would appreciate it, and I'm glad you said, I think that you're a city on the maximum. I can appreciate that, Attorney Pear. Thank you very much.
Yes, we have agreed to the maximum. You're welcome.
That I yield.
Thank you. Well said, Counselor. Counselor Dionne?
I just have one question. Basically, it's not even a question. For clarification purposes, especially with Councilor Ferreira mentioning cable, et cetera, can you just kind of explain for the public exactly what the purpose of the project is and what the end game is on this?
Sure. The end game is to provide service, you know, high-speed service to AT&amp;T customers. So this is a, this is done for capacity purposes. So the big, you know, lodge towers, the rooftop installations, water tank installations typically have a number of antennas which, you know, propagate a great distance. These are sort of fill-ins, so where we have areas where there's high traffic, a lot of volume, a lot of people using iPhones, iPads, in an area where, you know, traffic may pick up, we're using these small cell facilities now so we don't have to, you know, build those boomer facilities, and they're very focused on, you know, those specific areas. Depending on the terrain, you know, a typical installation would probably only reach a radius of about a quarter mile, maybe a third of a mile. Typically, they're in denser areas where, again, we're getting large amounts of traffic. So this kind of adds an additional lane for AT&amp;T customers, and they can attach to the network and get that quality, high-speed service.
Essentially, it makes it more fluid.
It's much, yeah, much faster and a better situation for AT&amp;T wireless customers, for sure.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor. Councilor Kilby?
Yes. What benefit does the city, in terms of real dollars, what are we going to get from, you know, from granting you this?
Yeah, a couple things. Number one, you get, you know, high-speed service for AT&amp;T customers.
I'm sorry about dollars and cents, my friend.
Oh, dollars and cents? Well, the FCC order allows the city to charge $1,000 for a replacement pole. Also, a, for the existing pole, it's $500, and then there's a $270 annual fee that's also allowed to be charged for managing the right-of-way. So those are the maximum fees that I was discussing that your solicitor, I expect...
So are you prepared to give, give me an answer in terms of what the city's financial benefit, benefit is going to get from this?
Yeah, you get $11,500 for the applications and $270 per location per year.
Okay. I just want to tell you a quick story. I settled a deal with a gentleman, of course, I can't, I'm an attorney as well, a perpetual lease man on his property in Westport for $1.7 million for a tower.
Yeah, so as I said, the FCC regulates the amount of fees. These are owned by National Grid, not by the city. We're just using the public right-of-way. What's that?
It was private property, of course. It was a public property, but I think the city's going to change a little bit after dealing with that, that situation. Go ahead, please.
Yeah, I mean, if, if, yeah, the city had a, you know, private property where they wanted to install a tower, but these small cell facilities and the public right-of-ways, the fees are limited by the federal government, so there's not a, that's the maximum that could be charged, and, you know, we typically try to do a little bit better, but, you know, we agreed to the maximum.
Okay. I wanted to get out, get it out there, but thank you for your...
Thank you, Counselor. Any further questions? Very nice. Is there a motion to close the hearing?
Motion to close.
The hearing has been made by Councilor Ferreira, seconded by Councilor Dionne. Roll call.
On closing the public hearings, Counselors Kadim?
Yes.
Dionne?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
La Libbidi Laboue? Lee?
Yes.
Peckham?
Yes.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Ferreira?
Yes.
President Ponti?
Yes. Attorney Pear, I'm going to release you from our meeting. If you'd like to watch the rest of our City Council meeting, you can do so on FRG TV or through their Facebook page. So thank you very much for your attendance here this evening.
Thank you very much.
All right. That will conclude our public hearings that are before us tonight. We're going to jump to our Committee on Finance, Forover City Council Committee on Finance, when I'll be called to order, Madam Clerk.
Counselors Kadim?
Here.
Dionne?
Yes.
Kilby?
Here.
La Libbidi Laboue? Lee?
Here.
Peckham?
Here.
Pelletier?
Yeah.
Ferreira?
Here.
President Ponti?
Here. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. As everybody knows, this committee meeting, as well as our full council, will be broadcast live, as all counselors are here through remote participation, through Zoom, at least for the rest of tonight, and the council will be making some decisions as to how we're going to be going forward with the rest of our deliberations. Just for the community to know, we do have a joint hearing with the Forover School Committee, scheduled for the 23rd. I believe that is still scheduled unless that is changed. I want also, everybody, to know that Council Vice President and I have been working with the Clerk and Mr. Gallagher to do some changes to the City Council Chamber. Our hope is to put plexiglass up between the cubicles, or between the desks, rather, I'm sorry, I think cubicles, but between the desks, which we're working on as we speak. In addition, Mr. Gallagher is also working on replacing the floors in the council chamber, which, as many of the counselors know, who have been here for as long as you have, those floors are at the end of its useful life. So we're working on that, and we're going to try to get back to our council chambers, because I know, I think it will probably at least be easier as we enter towards the budget deliberations. And if at any point counselors don't feel comfortable with going to the chambers, for whatever reason, we'll definitely make sure we make any kind of alterations with our friends at FRG TV. With that being said, first item on our agenda here tonight is, is citizens' input. Due to our COVID-19, essential advisory government centers close to the public, citizens may be able to submit through email at cityclerk-cities-clerks@forovermass.org by the, by 5:00 PM the day of this council meeting. First person who sent a communication to us is CJ Ferry. I believe his address is 300 Puffington Street, but I don't believe it's here on this communication. City Council President, Honorable Counsel, I wish to address you regarding two items on this evening's agenda. The first item is the school department's transportation contract. I firmly believe that the City Council needs to reject this transportation contract based upon the fact that the proposed contracts have not, have not considered the costs associated with the COVID-19 restrictions that have been implemented by DESI. Under the new guidelines, only one student may sit in a seat, and there must be a one-seat space between students. This will ultimately cut the transportation capability down by 1/4 to 1/3 of the vehicle capacity. This will mean that the bus that has seats of 55 students will be cut between 12 to 15 students, which will require three to four buses to transport the same number of children. A van will only carry two students instead of six to eight students, requiring three to four vans to carry the same number of students. These additional trips or vehicles will result in a cost that will be three to four times as much as the contract of $5 million may end costing the school department another $10 to $15 million. This will force the school department to come back to the City Council mid-year and ask for supplemental funding, which may not, we may not have. It's an easier plan, it's easier to plan for the worst and hope for the best. Based upon this information, the City Council should reject the transportation contracts and send them back to the school committee for recalculation based upon DBSE's guidance and Mass Department of Public Health and CDC recommendations. This is prudent and responsible thing to do. The second item I would like to address is the Adams House zoning that is before you this evening. While I know several of the counselors support the project, we need to look at the effects of spot zoning on the abutting properties. The reason for spot zoning is to have the property qualify for state tax incentives, loans, and grants. I want to remind you of spot zoning. This was done a bit ago for David Hebert. The members of the City Council opposed it very vocally and brought up the fact that spot zoning was illegal, and while assured by then-city administrator, that City Council could do, could do this. It created many ill feelings for neighbors of the property. While the project was accepted by the neighborhood group, nothing has happened to that property to date. I want to call your attention to other properties in the neighborhood. Would not be eligible for the same tax credits, loans, grants, as far as spot zoning, would not apply for these properties. This is ultimately unfair to the taxpayers in this neighborhood and creates a separate status for taxation for politically connected group of individuals and requires that other property owners to pay a fair share of tax assessment of the Adams House, which they will not pay. Further, one of the supporters slash principals in this project has a family relationship to the mayor, which may create ethical issues and the possibility that the mayor should have to refuse himself for recommending this project for such zoning. It just does not look right or fair, and while we are coming out of an administration which was allegedly corrupt, we do not need to visit this political, this, this potential once again. I thank you for your time, and we'll await your actions. CJ Ferry. Next person assigned to speak, or right to speak, is Colin Dias of 560 Bray Street, Fall River. I want to discuss two issues on the agenda. I see there is a resolution for the City Council Committee on Public Safety to convene with the Police Chief and the Police Board to discuss racial inequalities. This is a great resolution. I believe there are further parties that should be invited. I believe the council should, should invite members of the Black Lives Matter and those who have experienced injustices to the table as well. There is another resolution I would like to speak to regarding the city pier. The resolution, which was filed by City Councille Lee, calls for FROED to come to a future council meeting along with a member of RDA to discuss developments of the city pier. I am slightly puzzled to why this resolution was filed now, which comes after FROED resumes some responsibilities with the pier. There has been issues with the city pier for many years, however, now is, now it is to be discussed a bit. I hope this resolution leads to solving some environmental issues with the pier, and it wasn't filed for obstruction of the administration under the guidance of government and accountability. Thank you for your time, Colin Dias. Those are the only people who submitted communications to us for citizens' input. That will conclude that item on our agendas this evening. The next item on our agenda is an update from our mayor, Mayor Coogan, regarding COVID-19. Mayor, are you with us?
Yes, I am. Cliff Hollyo.
I'm very good. We can't see you, so if you can enable your video, if you'd like to be seen, go to the bottom, left-hand, yeah, go to the bottom left-hand corner where it says stop, stop or stop video, and click it, and we'll see you.
I'm clicking it now, but it's not doing anything.
Yep, we can hear you, so it's going to be, I guess, sight unseen. So Mayor, if you'd like to... All right. Unfortunately, Mayor, we're not, we're not able to hear you right now. Are you in a spot where you can maybe change your network connection or anything like that?
You want to speak?
Mr. President? Yes, Counselor? Counselor Kelly?
Could I make a motion that we, we postpone this later on in the meeting, because this malfunction happened, happened last time?
Yeah, sure. What I'm going to do...
People who are messages out there really, really want to hear a clear...
Yeah, fair enough, Counselor. I'd agree. Mayor, if you can hear us...
Technical stuff, I'm sorry, Mr. President. Let's get the technical, the stuff squared away, and I know he's, you know, our mayor has had a busy, busy couple of weeks, to say the least, but people want to hear from him. So let, can we maybe move on with the agenda for now?
Yeah, so Counselor, and the reason why I have, thank you for that, the reason I've been continuing to add him to our Committee on Finance is so that we can hear from him and hear his efforts that him and his administration have put forward to us. So what I'm going to do right now at this point...
It sounds unprofessional, to be honest with you.
Yeah, I hear you. I hear you.
It's not the mayor's fault.
Yeah, Counselor, so, Counselor, so what I'm going to do is, I'm going to ask that somebody from Fred TV, whether it's Mike or Alex, if you could please call the mayor and work something out with him over the next couple of minutes. Actually, hold on one moment. Looks like he's joining us here. There we go. Much better.
Thank you.
Much better. Mayor, if you could give us our update now, that'd be great. Thank you.
Hang on. Hey, Peter, give me those presentations. Let's talk about COVID first. Is that right?
That's all we're here for, yes.
Okay. I just want to thank everybody for giving me the opportunity. Actually, in Fall River, the numbers have been trending in the right direction. I got an update right here from St. South Coast, St. Anne's. Right now, they have COVID patients currently hospitalized, 95. They've done swab tests, 45,618 from March 11th to 7th of June. Patients testing positive, 9,199. Total admissions to COVID to Massachusetts, 2,100. At St. Anne's, we have no COVID patients at all, at all at all. They've swabbed 2,241 people in Fall River. Testing positive is 204. At South Coast, they've administered, again, this is three hospitals, 16,066 tests. Positive test results, 2253. They're still investigating 42 cases, so there's room in that hospital. Ventilators in use right now are 22. Testing capacity is plenty high with swabs. They're high on masks, surgical N95s and surgical mask gowns, they're still low, and sanitizer, they're low. The trends are bouncing around on them, which way they're going. I would like to talk about a couple of things that went on this week in Fall River, and then I will leave you guys to your business. We've had a very, very busy week in Fall River. We had three protests. Two were at Heritage, one were Lafayette. We had minimal violent episodes. We had a couple of jumpy guys that wanted to run around on the street on Saturday night. Those were dealt with, but overall, it was very safe and peaceful. The individuals all made their point, and I think Fall River was a role model for how to deal with those kind of issues. The, they did a good job. The police force was great. They stayed right in there the whole time, and it was, like I said, minimal problems. Our restaurants are now open for outdoor dining. If you want to get an outdoor license permit, I think you need to get them to a licensing board by the end of the week. They're going to have a meeting next week where they'll decide if you have a bar, you can't get an outdoor license, you have to serve food, it's for restaurants only. So if you want to help with that, call the mayor's office tomorrow, and we'll do whatever we can, but you have to move quickly on getting your license application in. Received a grant, Secretary of State, for $50,000 to work on the census. I don't know if any of you were walking around on the boardwalk last week. We had a census table set up there. We've got a real good group of young people that are really committed to trying to get names added to our census rolls. They had a meeting today in my office for a couple hours, and they're really grinding, and that's good. We also had a technology upgrade meeting today. We had a number of outside people that are tech savvy that came in and advised us, working with the in-house team, and I think we can make some progress there. Maybe we have to use some Pear's money to upgrade our technology for the city, and obviously, if this government center is open, staff is all back at work. We're still giving out masks. If you need them, come by in the morning and just call, and we'll, we'll try to help you with a mask. If you're stuck, call and call for an appointment. If you want to come into government center, it's been, everybody's been back at work, and it seems like it's been functioning pretty well. The Police Chief and I are working on a committee. We'll probably have a meeting Thursday night. We're going to bring some individuals in socially distanced appropriately and talk about some of the issues the city's been going through lately and hear from some different voices, which I think are important when people want to create dialogue like this about justice and social responsibility. And last thing I will say is Bay Coast Bank is picking up quickly. If you do want to pay a bill on Bay Coast, swing by. Seems like it's working good. There's five branches in Fall River. It does take the stress out of government center, and it limits the public traffic. That being said, that's all I got for you tonight. If I have any questions, I'll answer them. If not, please do.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of quick questions counselors have. Counselor Kilby?
Yes, just a quick comment. You know, Paul, I think you did a tremendous job in terms of reaching out to the young people of this community. I know you were a teacher for, and a principal, and, you know, for many years, and it's my understanding that you brought a lot of these young people together, and I think, my opinion, it's a, it's a very good... And I think, my opinion, it's a, it's a very good example how cities like Fall River should be, should be handling these protests through education, love, and just reaching people, okay? So I think you and Jeff Cardoza, and I think the teacher came out of you. And I just, I don't want to be accused of being a Coogan rubber stamper, but I think what, what's right is right and when someone needs some accolades and attention, I think you were very, very, very hands-on with young people. And, you know, I said it to my family and my wife and stuff, I think for this point in time, you're the right mayor at the right time. So. And that's from my heart, Paul.
I really appreciate that. That means a lot because you worked with me up there. You know how fancy that place can get sometimes and it was like maybe the cafeteria.
It's my understanding that you met with some of the young children that you had, well, that they're in their, maybe their 30s, late 20s now, who used to be your students. And you, you kind of, I don't want to say made sense to them because they have their cause, of course, and we all like our causes. But, you know, in your teacher way, you, you basically, I think, diffused what, what could have been, could have been, thank God it's not, maybe some violence, okay? I'm glad that didn't happen. But I'm reading on social media and stuff that some people are saying that it was an overkill and too many police officers, a small group of people and all other stuff, you know, baloney. We have to be proactive. And, you know, it was handled properly. So you had a long week and, you know, now the next challenge is the budget, of course, and the virus and I guess that's what I want to say.
Just keep moving. Thank you, Brad. It was, it was, it was great to be around the kids again. I always liked the, mucking it up with them and there's a lot of goofy kids there and they were very positive, even though.
Sean Thames, that's a great example right there, my friend Sean Thames.
I want to, I also have to acknowledge Trot Lee.
Absolutely.
One of the events with us and spoke and I'd also like to thank him for participating with us on Thursday. It means a lot to me, so I appreciate it, John.
Yeah, and I still have to follow Mr. President for one more comment. My, my colleague Trot Lee. Talk about breaking barriers. My friend Trot Lee is the first African-American elected official in a city of Fall River and we got incorporated in 1840, I think. So I have nothing but admiration and love for my, for my colleague. And I, in a way you've handled yourself, Trot, it's outstanding. With that, I yield.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Dionne?
She's on mute.
Yes, I was. Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Lee. So in terms of the outdoor dining, apparently the licensing board, if people want their license extended outside for alcoholic beverages, there's going to be a meeting for that, is that what you're saying?
Next week, Michelle. They got to get in touch with the, you can call government center tomorrow. If you have a restaurant or somebody needs a little help to walk them through it, there's an application and they got to get it into the board so that they can act on it next week, by Friday.
Okay, now I'm under, I'm under the impression, however, though, that there are some establishments that are already serving alcohol outdoors. Now, are they jumping the gun? Have they not followed the process? What's the story with that?
They had, those, those restaurants had licenses prior to, like Mesa, that patio on the left, that was theirs. The one, Prime 19, they had outdoor seating for 25 already in their license when they initially got it. They asked for outdoor seating. Barretts on the waterfront, which has that porch, the cold, you could always eat and drink out on the dock, I mean, on the deck in the back. They already had it, so they're, they're only moving on the license they already have. The ones that we're talking about are the ones that want to add drinks outdoors that might not have that kind of license. Some people already.
Yep, because I am aware of a couple of places who have already been inspected by the fire department and the city and have been approved for the outdoor seating, so they're only, the only step left for them is extending the license for alcoholic beverages outside.
Yeah, and like I said, if you have somebody you want to tell them to call the office, we'll walk them through it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. And just so everybody, more of a point of information, I know Counselor Pereira does have a resolution on the agenda tonight. I know she's worked for years and years and years to try to cut the red tape when it comes to outside dining. But just for a point of clarification, the outside dining that, it's my understanding, and I, correct me if I'm wrong, Mayor, but it's my understanding that the outside dining aspect that needs to go before the licensing board is liquor related.
Alcohol only, yep, alcohol only.
Alcohol only, correct. So if you are a establishment that does not intend to serve liquor outside, there is a permitting, permit process, whereas you have to go to the building inspector to file a, pay $46 or $47 for a permit, get your proper sign-offs and then you can open outside as long as you meet the safety requirements. So just so everybody is aware, so there's no confusion. If you own a restaurant that does not serve alcohol, it is my understanding you do not need to go before the licensing board. You have to contact either the mayor's office or you can contact the building inspector's office for a billing permit so that you can do it as long as you meet all necessary sign-offs. Counselor Lee?
Just, just wanted to discuss the, the weekend and the last week period. So, Mr. Mayor, we, we saw you and the new police chief, Chief Cardoza, doing some things that I haven't, I personally haven't seen in the past. And a lot of this is unprecedented anyway. We have COVID-19 going on in the community, but we also had, you know, some, some protests in the community. And what I saw the chief do was reach out to these leaders and organizers of these protests and have a dialogue with them and not treat them like they were criminals or talk to them, you know, talk down to them in any kind of way. We're seeing, we're seeing it on a national scale, all over the news about, you know, what to do with the police forces and things like that around the country. One of the things that I think we need to do in this community is just let people understand that a police force is necessary in this community. We, I, I would never look to look, to take away resources, anything like that. But I think what we really have to do is recognize that policing a community, public safety is not just about the police force. It's also about what we're doing in the communities and how our community is supporting it as well. Whether it be through neighborhood watches, whether it be through any kind of programs that are helping people who are impoverished find ways to educate themselves on, on jobs, on, on job training, on, on just furthering education, things like that. If we're, if everything's designed to only focus on the police department, then when crime does occur, we're only going to blame the police department. Do you see what I'm saying? And I think we have to do a lot more in our community outside of the police department in order to really help keep our community safe. And that's, that's part of the reason why I have this resolution. This resolution is to talk about what proactive strategies we have in place and what, what can we do in the future to know that people are being cared about, that their safety is the number one important thing. So I don't, I don't have, I mean, I appreciate your, your meeting that's going to be here on Thursday. That, that way we can speak to everybody in the community about what they're going through and how we can make that better. But my, my resolution tonight is primarily about what our police department can do and if we do need to add anything more to, to the role of community and, and making sure that we're reaching out to the community first, not just responding to, you know, not just responding to crime or responding to anger, responding to any protest, but that we're being proactive to the point where people won't need to feel that they have to protest, that they know that people are on their side in this community. I think that's really the most important thing. I, I've had more people contact me in the past two weeks asking me what can we do? And it shouldn't be in 2020, it shouldn't be 2020, people shouldn't be asking me that. I shouldn't be the first ever city counselor in Fall River, Counselor Kilby. Do you understand what I'm saying?
I'm sorry.
You know what I mean? This is just the community that we have right now and I'm glad some people's eyes are opening, but all I'm doing right now is talking too. If it's all, if it all ends up being talked, then it's, nothing's going to get done. So I'm hoping.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you said.
I, I just said I shouldn't be the first city, black city counselor in Fall River history, you know what I mean? Like in 2020.
I know, I'm just saying I'm proud of you, my friend.
Well, I appreciate that. I, I do. So, so bottom line is, bottom line to that is, I think I'm glad that a lot of eyes are opening now and I'm hoping that there's some productive things that occur, that come out of these resolutions that come down the line and these discussions and these talks that you're going to have with the, with the community to the mayor. So on that, I will, I'll yield on that. Counsel President?
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Pelletier?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I got a few phone calls and there's a small problem in the city of Fall River and it pertains to illegal fireworks throughout the city of Fall River. There's a individual.
Mr. President, I think this is about the virus. It's a point of order.
Oh, he's taking questions. We could ask a question to the mayor or we could just let him know. I could put a resolution in. If you don't want to hear from me, Brad, no problem. I'll sit back. No problem, my friend. I yield.
Counselor.
You know, I was just going to bring it up, you know, I could put a resolution in. You're there. If you have any questions, ask the question. You don't want me to talk, I won't talk. Thank you.
Counselor, are you sure you want to yield? You can, you can speak to the.
It's not right, you know? He can talk about the mayor and how terrific he is and this and that and that and that. Okay, so he talks for five minutes. I just got a little message to talk to him and say, I can call him up in the morning. But I told the individual, call me, talk to me for a half hour, that if I could talk to the mayor or if there's an opening, I would let him know what he thinks and there's something that should be done. But if you don't want to hear from me, I'll go to my rock and jam rock.
Well, Counselor, I think it's, I, I think it's important. I think all the Counselors have had some, some comments and concerns regarding the fireworks. I would allow, I'm going to allow the question. Mayor, I know you've taken some proactive steps to educate the community on this process regarding fireworks that are being thrown at people's cars, which is a safety issue and they're making lots of noise in all neighborhoods. All councils have received calls. But I know that your offer sent out a press release today. Do you want to speak on that?
Yeah, just briefly, Cliff, thank you. We did, we did, Counselor Pelletier is right on the button. We've been getting the same calls he's getting, so we put a little press release out reminding people that that's part of a noise ordinance. Matter of fact, Joan Medias and I were talking about today, it goes back to her father. When there was auto body shops, one and a half to 10 and 11 at night, they put in this noise ordinance. A fireworks in Fall River should never be fired off. It's not safe. There's fires. And I had a brief conversation with one of the policemen about it and we will follow up. And to Counselor Pelletier's point, we put that press release out today addressing that because we're getting the exact same calls he gets. And I wasn't cutting you off, Leo. I don't mind getting questions from you.
No, no, I appreciate it. I was given a small opportunity to do it right now and I've done it. And I'm sorry if I offended anybody.
Counselor Pelletier, do you have any other questions for the mayor?
No, I'm all set.
Okay, thank you, Counselor. Counselor Pereira? Just need to have you unmuted, Counselor. Just unmute yourself.
Also adding to the fireworks, I've gotten calls as well. I think it's a big problem in the city. But when I was driving by the CVS near the old D'Angelo's on Pleasant Street, there was a woman holding a sign, fireworks, to go to Tiverton to buy fireworks. And on the, I did call the chief, I actually text him and said, I don't know what you want to do about this, but they sent somebody and they're out of here. They're illegal here, so I think Leo's right. I mean, I know I'm inundated with hearing it up here and you don't know if it's gunshots, you don't know if it's fireworks. A lot of my veteran friends get PTSD and that freaks them out. It also, people that have dogs and stuff, it messes them up. That's just to shout out there. You're right on target, Leo. Mr. Mayor, to you and to the chief, the talking that you did and all that was said through these protests was very well done and I'm very proud of our city for having that. I know that there were talk that there was too many people, but you know, the ones that say it was overkill, there was too many people, they would be the first to stand on the top of City Hall and show that we weren't prepared, that we didn't have enough people. So get off of Facebook because not everybody makes sense on there. Lastly, I, I did read Trot's, Trot Lee's message, the, the resolution that he filed. I've said this before and I'm going to say it again. We are a diverse community, but we don't show our diversity. And, and Counselor Lee's right, it's not just about the police. But let's look at the housing authority. It's all white males and one white female. So the minorities that reside, any minority that resides in any of our developments has no representation. That's wrong. The Board of Health, many of our variety stores are owned now by minority people who have come into the city and purchased these stores. But yet they don't have a seat at the table. Police Board doesn't have a minority. Fire Commission doesn't have a minority. Zoning Board doesn't have a minority. Come on, wake up. It is 2020 and if we're going to be looking at doing that, I'd love to be a part of that team to work on that. But we need to start showing the diversity that we have in the community because we are fortunate to have so many cultures in our community as we do. I think it's wonderful. And lastly, the resolution for outdoor dining, I put that in in 2014. Trot saying, wow, it's the first time we have, you know, someone of color on the council. It, it's so slow to move things in this city, 2014 to 2020, that let our restaurants be outdoor. What I don't understand is a comment that was made that they've got to go to the building department and they've got to get a permit. Come on, these restaurants have been hit with COVID. You can't just let them go outside or give somebody a permit for a small amount of money for somebody that doesn't have that. The other thing on, on the committee, the resolution that I filed along with Michelle, talk about being a community that has diversity. When have we ever, when we have meetings, invited members of, or the chairman, Dennis Vasselli, of the Committee on Disability? Give them a seat at the table. If we want to have some chairs on the sidewalk, is there enough room for a wheelchair to get by? For one of those scooters to get by? You know, come on, let's, let's all work inclusively. With that, I ran, I'll probably get in trouble, Leo, for talking too much, but with that, I yield. Thank you. How come I can't hear anybody?
You're on mute.
I'm on mute? They're on mute.
Counsel President is.
Okay. I thought everybody shut up.
Sorry about that. My dog was barking earlier. Let's just, we have our mayor here for our COVID-19 questions. So let's ask any COVID-19 related questions to the mayor if we can at this point. Counselor Peckham?
I raised my hand. It wasn't a COVID-related response to the mayor, but really quick, two seconds. Pertaining to the mayor being a teacher and building rapport with the kids in the city that definitely worked in his favor at one of the protests. I personally witnessed the mayor take some, some flak from one of the protesters and before the police could come over, three of his former students stepped in front of him to deescalate the situation. That in itself proves what type of teacher and what type of rapport he had built with the children of the city of Fall River. Secondly, really quick, in response to the ordinance with fireworks. I know we hear it all the time that it's just fireworks, it's the 4th of July. Well, I remember about 20 some odd years ago on Diamond Street, I believe it may have been 50 or 52, if my memory serves me correct. And he may have been a city employee, kids were lighting off fireworks and one of the bottle rockets went in through the skylight and we lost the entire property. I think when it pertaining to fireworks, we have to start to take that a little more seriously. One property was enough 20 years ago and they are going off like every night's the 4th of July. It's, again, something public safety wise, I think, we should address. With that, I yield. Thank you.
Counselor, Counselor Kilby? You just have to, you just have to unmute yourself, Counselor. If you could just unmute yourself.
I, uh, I apologize, Councillor Pelletier, I didn't mean to insult you, I was just, uh. As usual, comfortable at home and being a little sarcastic, I guess, but uh. But you know, um, you're right, I've been getting calls on the fireworks as well, so. 'Tis the season, it's Fourth of July, our police department is stretched out to the max. Over what's been going on for the last couple of weeks, so. Um, I know for me, in my yard, I'm not gonna build, uh, burn any fireworks, so. I'm gonna go by Peckham Street, I'm gonna make sure you have no mattresses burning in our yard. And you have no fireworks burning in our yard on Fourth of July. With that, I yield, thank you, my friend.
Any further questions for the mayor regarding COVID nineteen? Councillor Kadine.
Thank you, first of all, I just wanna say I'm most choked on my border because of uh, Councillor Pelletier saying he was gonna rock on his rocking chair. Literally spit my wa, spit my water all over my computer and everything, so thank you, Mr. Pelletier.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, just in terms of the COVID nineteen, you had mentioned. Uh, some of the restaurants are opening up, so that the establishments that already have outside patio, they're, they're able to do that. Their liquor license obviously covers those patio areas. You're saying that anybody that needs to or wants to have outside patio that currently does not have it. Would have to go through a permit process and then uh, to serve alcohol. Are you saying there's a deadline for this Friday or? Is, is that?
No, that's for the ones that wanna be acted on next week.
Okay.
Just for next week, because there's a meeting, I guess, uh, John Salino called up and today and said if they wanna get him in for next week, we meet him by Friday. But they'd obviously go on after that.
So is, is the licensing board not allowing or gonna take a vote to give you the authority to go ahead and approve some of these uh, establishments instead of temporary?
Uh, I have not heard that.
The statue, the statue allows, the statue allows, um. I believe, I believe the executive branch, the mayor, to actually allow. Um. These, these establishments a temporary license. So you just have to provide some type of notice to the ABCC. So I don't know that you need to wait for a public hearing or, or a public meeting, I should say, not necessarily public hearing, so can we just look at that? Cause I just, I just hate to run into a situation where we've got establishments that are looking to do it and they're. Having to wait either two weeks or a month or something like that, and then obviously. We're back to, um, you know, phase. The end of phase two or phase three where you can actually dine in at this point.
No, I couldn't agree with you more, I did read that, but people said, oh, you still gotta go through the regular process, but it said executive of the city or chief administrator or something. We'll look at it in the morning and I appreciate your comments.
Thank you, I yield.
Any further questions regarding COVID to our mayor? Harry, none, thank you, uh, thank you, mayor, I appreciate your, your time and your continued efforts with uh, keeping this council. Uh, in the community updated during this uh, these trying times, so thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
All right, I will conclude that, uh, update from the mayor's complete mayor and a proposed fiscal twenty twenty-one budget for Emergency Management Division. Uh, I'm gonna bring back in uh, Paul Furlan, Mr. Furlan is gonna be joining us shortly here. Um, um. Mrs. Sahadi is here, uh, Mrs. Sahadi, floor is yours for a overview, please.
Um, certainly, um, and I believe the fire chief and um, director. Um, Tim Olivera are available somewhere if they're still watching, I know they were on.
I'm join, I'm having them join us now, just so everybody knows, I kinda put them in the waiting room. Because there was a lot of boxes here and uh, we're getting some calls and text messages that it was kinda hard to see, so. Um, uh, Mr. Furlan is here muted and our Chief Lynch, as well as Chief Cardozer is here as well. Um, but.
Okay, perfect. So, so what you have in front of you is the EMS budget, um, as you know, the EMS budget is primarily um, funded by user fees. Um, as well as um, a grant that we receive on an annual basis that the EMS department shares with. Um, the general fund in terms of the fire department departmental revenue. Um, as it relates to um, their operating budget, they are still um, in this particular fiscal year, um, going to. Um. Absorb some of the cost, if you will, because um, we've got the gentlemen who are still working. Um, jointly between the paramedics that are still working jointly between the fire department and the EMS department. So their names are listed in the fire department's budget, but there is a shared portion of that squad. Um, in the EMS department's budget that you have in front of you. Um, in addition, um. All of the COVID-related expenses for fiscal year two thousand twenty. Um, are going to be paid through um, a combination of a couple of grants, those items that are coming out of FEMA. Will be seventy-five percent covered and twenty-five percent covered from the CARES Act. And we also applied for a DOJ grant. And those monies will be charged directly to the DOJ grant. And what you're seeing in this particular budget may in fact include some additional COVID-related expenses going forward into fiscal two thousand twenty-one. Um, as we finish fiscal twenty and we go into twenty-one, still may need some PPE, PPE and, and other items. Um, those items will again be removed as they're expended and um, put into a separate fund. Um, for funding from the federal government as well as the state government. Uh, other than that, um, there isn't any significant changes within the budget itself. Uh, the um, fund this year fiscal two thousand twenty is um, going to finish the year. Um, at somewhat of a break even, I don't think we're gonna have a surplus, um, as we've had in prior years, the. Call claims and, and the chief and, and the director can speak to this directly, but the call claims, of course, have been down because. There hasn't been the, the ability to go to um, the doctors in the hospital as there was prior to COVID. But um, I spoke with um, Deputy Director um, Fons today and she indicated that. Based on where we are in the month of June, the expectation is to finish the year and meet the budget. So I don't know if you have any other specific questions, again, both Chief Lynch and the Director Olivera is here and able to answer those questions. And this budget is in front of you, as a complete budget, again, it's, it's based on user fees. And so as a result, there is no reason to delay the approval of um, the enterprise fund budget.
I'd say appropriate motion, Mr. President, would be to uh, motion to full council or?
He's, he's muted.
Muted again?
Muted, Cliff, you're muted.
Mr. President, what, what would be the appropriate motion, please?
It probably be appropriate to refer to uh, the full council for action.
Motion revert to full, full council for action.
Council for action has been made by Councillor Kilby, seconded by Councillor Peckham. Harry, no further discussion, roll call.
Councillor Kadine?
Yes.
Dionne?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Alibi LeBeau?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peckham?
Yes.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Pereira?
Yes.
President Ponti?
Yes.
Next item is a loan order of four point eight. Change for the Phase Twenty Water System Improvements. Referring on May nineteenth.
Good evening, council. Uh, in front of you, you have a loan order, uh, Phase Twenty. Uh, we're currently constructing Phase Nineteen, will be uh, constructed this year. Uh, this is for the rehabilitation of water system. Uh, we've been working on this project for the past twenty years. As you know, our system uh, is a pretty old system, started out uh, eighteen seventies. That's when a lot of uh, uh, water lines were laid within the city. That's when the initial plant was built, eighteen seventy-three, on the edge of the Northwood Upper Pond. Um. From there on into the early nineteen hundreds, additional mains were laid. Of about two hundred and forty miles of water mains throughout the city. Uh, back in the seventies, the city did a uh, major replacement on replacing a lot of the mains. Uh, with their own staff, when the staff of Water Maintenance Division was in the sixty. Uh, employees within that division, we did our uh, our own main replacement. Um, there was also federal grants at, at time to be able to do main replacement. Uh, over the ve, past twenty years since uh, two thousand, we've been working on uh, main replacement of mains that haven't been done. This is a continuation of that project. Uh, within the Phase Twenty loan authorization, the total authorization amount is four point eight five eight. Uh. And eighty-five dollars, million dollars, um, the uh. There is a portion in here, three point four four million, uh, that is for water main replacement. Uh, that's replacement of old tuberculated mains throughout the city. Uh, we do have approval through the State Revolving Fund, the SRF Fund. Which will provide us a two percent low interest loan for that money, uh, to be paid back over the next twenty years. Um, the additional work that would be uh, that is proposed within the Phase Twenty Loan Authorization. Uh, would be some electrical upgrades at our Copacoot Pump Station. So that's the pump station that pumps water from our reserve reservoir, the Copacoot Reservoir. Pumps it uh, across uh, cross country, uh, over into the Northwood Upper Pond. So then it can be treated and pumped out to our customers. Uh, we also have in there some street paving for streets that have been impacted. Um, by water main replacement. Uh, we have uh, some monies in there for watershed protection. Uh, for conservation and land acquisitions within our watershed. Uh, we also have uh, water treatment plant security. So this would provide access control, uh, security cameras, uh, and some other uh, access uh. You know, prevention down at our water treatment plant. And then we also have filter media rehab of filters number one and number three. The streets that are proposed to be replaced this year during the Phase Twenty uh, water main replacement. Uh, we have about uh, eleven thousand five hundred linear feet of main proposed to be replaced. Uh, all from the late eighteen hundreds or early nineteen hundreds. Uh, the streets to be replaced is Baller Street. From Quarry to Calissa. Carr Street from County to Keene. Coolidge from Hemlock to Weedamo. Dean from Alden to the Dead End. Notre Dame from Saint Joseph to Pleasant Street. Pittman Street from East Warren to Webster. Provost Street from Pleasant to McGowan. Quarry Street from Pleasant to Hargreaves. Renaud Street from Kennedy to Powell. Rubin Street from Quarry to Quikashan. Roper Street from Hurst to Smiths. Ryan Street from Brayton to Omen. Webster Street from Alden to Pleasant. Webasette Street from Pleasant to Armstead. Williamson Street from Coolidge to Warren. And Atlantic Boulevard from Pembroke to Title. Uh, again, all those mains were installed in the late eighteen hundreds, early nineteen hundreds. Uh, also through this project, what we do is we uh, remove lead services within our system. Uh, so we still have a number of lead services uh, within the drinking water system. Uh, there is no danger to the drinking water because we do have a uh. We do maintain a balanced pH uh, and alkalinity within the system. Um, so there's no leaching of the lead into the water system. But uh, we are under a consent order with DEP. To remove uh, seven percent of the lead services within our system every year. Uh, this will help us comply with that order. Uh, again, so that would be, um. We'd be looking for approval of this uh, prior to June thirtieth. Um, that way we can proceed with the SRF. Um. State Revolving Fund Loan Process. Um. And uh. Be able to continue forward. The uh, again, as I said, you know, we've made great process, progress through this uh, with all, with all the uh, main replacement that we've done. Uh, you know, if you've ever seen some of the old tuberculated mains that uh, that we do pull out of the street. Uh, you end up having a one or two inch hole in the center of a six inch main. And that's feeding the whole entire street, all the houses within the street, so. Um, most of these mains are like that. Um. And uh, we'll be able to uh, keep on replacing those. So, that is a basic breakdown, uh, within the packet, there was also a breakdown of uh. Those rate impacts of uh, what uh, these loans would impact uh, on the rates in the future. Um, there was something mentioned, so about uh, loans, uh. You know, it raises the question of whether loans are coming off or stuff like that. Uh, this year coming into FY twenty-one and twenty-two, we do not have any loans. Uh, that will be uh, that will be fully paid off. But we're starting to get to the point now, um, starting FY twenty-three, uh, twenty-five, we do have some of the earlier loans, since the. The loans are, have a twenty-year term. Coming up in those future years, we will have some loans, some larger loans that will be coming off, uh, coming off of our debt service. So.
Thank you, Mr. Furlan, uh, Councillor Kilby?
Yes, uh, Mr. Furlan, um, couple of quick questions, so. All these street repairs obviously are uh, water related. Water protection related, right?
Yes, so they, so it's all, it's all to do with.
It went over the streets, but. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Nope, it's all to do with, with, so our, our, our main purpose, the water department, we're out there to replace the water main. And uh, continue to provide clean, safe drinking water to our customers, that's, that's what this program is based off of. Um, you know, over the years, we have uh, we have uh, had to expand our paving. Uh, just so that, you know. Years ago, when we did these main replacement projects, uh. The paving was always an issue as it uh, as it progressed later on. Uh, what we've done in more recent years, we've expanded it, which does cost more money per foot of main replacement. Um, you know, but we do get a better finished product for the residents. When we go in and we mill from the curb out, either to the center line or close to the center line.
Well, uh, the, the last meeting we had, Councillor Kadine mentioned um, Joe Kamara in terms of getting this started many, many years ago. About twenty-five years ago, I think, under, um. Am I, am I correct, Sean? Caning, you know.
Twenty years.
Yeah, yeah.
Twenty years, yep.
I mean, it's a, it's a no-brainer for me to approve this. Um, but I, we, you and I have to have a future conversation about some wildlife protection. Um, um, and that we're tough upon, but I'll, I'll serve that for another day, if you don't mind, okay?
Yes, definitely.
I yield.
Thank you, any other questions for Mr. Furlan? On this item, Harry, not, Harry, none, no, Councillor Kadine?
Um, Mr. Furlan, just in terms of uh, the. Liberty Utilities that's doing some work up in the north end of the city, I, I mean, they're doing work all over the city, but. Um, in particular President Ave and, and that area, do you have any water main replacements projects that are going on there? Are there any in the nineteen?
Yeah, so we do have some water main replacement that'll be going out there this year, um, on, in President Ave. Uh, we have talked with engineering uh, to try to uh, work with them. Again, what we're trying to do with these projects, Liberty Utilities, as you mentioned, is impacting our streets, uh, our roadways very heavily. Uh, the water main project for years has. Um. And that's why we budgeted some money in here to be able to work with the Liberty Utilities, the Engineering Department. Water and sewer, so that we can all work together, so when all of the projects are done, and it may take two years, you know, we may do it one year. You know, gas company may replace the next year, but then when it's all done, we'll have a nice uh, finished street. Um, so that's what we've been trying to do, uh, in the President Ave area, we're not doing the whole stretch, there is. Uh, that, like Liberty Utilities did, we're doing uh, some smaller areas. Uh, but we are gonna try to work with them to uh, get a good finished product.
Yeah, I guess I, my only concern, I shared this with the mayor the other day and um, Council President. Uh, when you start driving up President Ave, they've, they've got road cuts, trenches that are crossing, running along. One side of the street, cross over to the other side of the street and you just got patches of old street. To me, that's absolutely insane, um, you know, I, I think if we had, have work, uh, we should be sitting down with Liberty Utilities to. Uh, as opposed to them doing a final paving uh, of a, of a trench that's only, you know, probably three feet by a, you know, two or three miles that we get that money. And that we actually do the entire street, I mean, if you drive up President Ave now, it just, it looks absolutely horrendous and. You got some, obviously the trench's a brand new, um, and it's, and it's a permanent fix on it, cause that's the permanent, permanent pay, uh, pavement that they put in there. But then you've got just stretches of roads that's just ready to be repaired, so. Now, when we go in and repair the entire road, we're gonna be spending money on, on the entire roadway and, and obviously just throwing around, throwing away the uh. You know, the, the product that was put down by Liberty Utilities, so. It's just counterintuitive, frustrates me when I drive to the city and I, and I start to see these trenches and the pavements of it and not having the uh. Full roadway curb to curb being replaced or at least um, a full length of at least one side of the road. Uh, so that we only have to do the other side of the road and we. and we, we're meeting in the middle uh where the lines are. Um I, I think we just need to do a better job uh in terms of that, and I know it's not really to, on topic, but I, I, it is when we start talking about some of these projects. So uh I, I know you're doing your due diligence, but if we can just do a better job with the other departments to make sure that uh we're coordinating these, these projects to make sure that we don't see, you know, the second streets and the President Aves, that, that type of roadwork. I mean, it just, it looks horrendous.
Okay.
I yield.
Thank you, Councilor Furlan.
Just one quick, please, Cliff.
Councilor Kilby?
President, I'm sorry. Um yeah, kudos, Sean, um Councilor Kadeem. Um if you remember last term, uh we were on a council, all of us, most of us anyway. Um we took a stand on the streetscapes and the big waste that was uh, was going on over there, in my opinion. Uh some of it came out nice, but other portions of the city came out terrible. Um so um I know, you know, driving around the city quite often that I'm seeing an improvement, I'm seeing a huge improvement um with it, with the, the, the monies that we transferred going to solid, solid projects where people trans- transport, uh whatever, they, they drive around every single solid every day. Uh High Street, for example, and I, I can give other um, other examples. So uh I don't want to talk too much this meeting, I, I don't want to belabor the point, but I give you a lot of credit, Sean, for uh Council Kadeem for um, for taking that stand because it was the right one. Thank you. I yield.
Thank you. Uh anything further from the council? Hearing no further discussion uh with respect to this loan order. Uh is there a motion or refer to full council for adoption?
Motion.
Motion for full council for adoption has been made by Councilor Kilby, seconded by Councilor Pereira, hearing no further discussion, roll call.
On referral for adoption, Councilors Kadeem?
Yes.
Dion?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Alibidi Laboe? Alibidi Laboe?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peckham?
Yes.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Pereira?
Yes.
And President Ponti.
Yes. That will conclude our committee on finance. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn finance has been made by Councilor Dion, seconded by Councilor Peckham, roll call.
An adjournment, Councilors Kadeem?
Yes.
Dion?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Alibidi Laboe?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peckham?
Yes.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Pereira?
Yes.
And President Ponti.
Yes.
Committee is adjourned. For the City Council, full council of the regular former City Council will now come to order. Madam Clerk.
Clerk Kadeem?
Yeah.
Dion?
Here.
Kilby?
Yeah.
Alibidi Laboe?
Yeah.
Lee?
Here.
Peckham?
Yeah.
Pelletier?
Yeah.
Pereira?
Yeah.
President Ponti.
Here, pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. Um as mentioned earlier, before the start of our committee on finance, all, this whole full meeting is currently being uh broadcast to the community through power of government television and everybody is at a remote location. Uh first item on our agenda, uh Madam Clerk.
Are we not?
See first, I'm sorry.
Oh, I, I apologize.
Including the flag or a moment of silence for all those?
I apologize, Counselor. Um if everybody could please um stand for a moment of silence uh as well as after that, we're gonna do a salute to the flag. Thanks to our Assistant City Clerk, Inez, uh for the flag that we can have now. So everybody could do that. Thank you, with a salute to the flag, I pledge allegiance to the flag. Thank you, Counselor, I apologize about that.
President, Mr. President, given the fact that the chief has really been.
Yes, a motion to take uh item three out of order.
Hey, uh Counselor Kilby?
You read my mind.
I have the floor.
Counselor Pereira.
I have the floor.
Counselor Pereira.
I would like to make a motion to take item three out of order.
Second.
Motion to take items three out of order uh has been made by Counselor Pereira, seconded by Counselor Kilby, roll call.
Councilors Kadeem?
Yes.
Dion?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Alibidi Laboe?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peckham?
Yes.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Pereira?
Yes.
And President Ponti.
Yes.
Madam Clerk.
Item number three is the mayor's request in an order appointing Jeffrey Cardoza as the Chief of Police.
Motion to adopt?
Second.
Is there a motion to adopt?
A motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt has been made by Counselor Pereira, seconded by Counselor Dion. Uh we're gonna do discussion. Counselor Pereira.
I just want to say that I think we did a great job picking a new chief. I'm very impressed. Um he has dealt with so much right from the get-go and has abos, was able to manage. And I thank you, I thank the department. Um I thank you for all of the work that uh our police officers have done in this difficult time. We do have four of his finest, and I'm very proud of them. So thank you, Chief, and I wish you nothing but safety and a lot of luck. With that, I yield.
Thank you, Counselor. Uh Counselor Kilby.
Two words, congratulations, Chief.
Thank you, Counselor, I appreciate that.
Counselor Dion.
Yeah, I'd just like to say that um, you know, I'm, I'm definitely uh a yes for this chief. Um but on his own merit. Um I have to say that strictly based on the process, I, I wouldn't have, I probably would have abstained from the vote because um, you know, we weren't aware of what the questions were. We weren't involved in, in the interview process. Um but everything that I have comes from Chief Cardoza reaching out to me. And I believe he reached out to all of us, and, and to me, that's a credit to the type of person he is and the type of chief he's going to be. Uh the man has an extensive resume, he's very qualified for the position. Um hit, throughout his career, he's taken incentive and he's been motivated to improve himself uh from a bachelor's degree in Roger Williams in criminal justice to a master's degree in public administration from Anna Maria College to taking it upon himself to attend uh a very difficult program to get into, the FBI National Academy in Washington DC. Another course in Washington, the Senior Management Institute for Poli- uh for police. You know, i- it's, it takes a motivated person to go out of their way to prepare themselves um and, and, you know, for, for, for the, for the future. You know, they always say you don't dress for the job you want today, you just, you dress for the job you want tomorrow. Um and, and this individual, I feel, has done this. And in, just in this past week, I believe he demonstrated extreme knowledge, extreme um, he kept the city safe, he, he, he showed great professionalism. And based on all of that, based on his reaching out, him making his resume available to us and us being able to evaluate him, um I support this, this um, I support this and I'm happy to have him as a chief, and I'm looking forward to um what he will do for our city and our department moving forward. And I also am very pleased with the contract that he agreed to with the city. Uh you know, he, he's helped us even financially already. So with that, I yield.
Thank you, Counselor. Most, most, Counselor, Counselor Peckham?
Um I, I've had the opportunity over the last uh week and a half or so to be in constant contact with the chief uh due to current situations in the city. Um with that said, every time I called, he picked up on the first ring. Uh he was always available. I can't, I, in what he's faced in the first thirty days of, of uh his interim appointment, uh professionalism, i- it, that's an understatement, it, it's amazing. Um his proactiveness during the protest, even though we didn't know that the, the last one was gonna go on, he was prepared. And we had had a dis- a discussion about that, and uh his proactiveness uh was phenomenal. I believe that's due to his community policing skills, his background in community policing, the fact that he was able to get out there and talk to these protesters um and quell some situations while he was out there, uh be able to speak to the community uh because he did spend the majority of his career in community policing. Um I've received several phone calls and uh while I was at the staging area Diamond, I had police officers coming up to me and saying, within his short time as chief, the morale within that station has skyrocketed. Guys are now wanting to come to work and work together, and that's all due to the fact of uh who the interim chief was, and I thank you for that, Chief, I really do.
Thank you for saying that. Thank you very much, kind words.
Thank you, thank you, Counselor. Uh Council Vice President Alaboe.
Thank you. Uh I just want to say congratulations to the chief, um very well deserved. He has been my go-to for the last, I'd say, five or six years. It's been a pleasure to work with him. I think it's great for the department, I think it's uh great for the city. And uh he's more than qualified, incredibly professional, and um I'm happy to support this contract. Congratulations, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Council Vice President. Uh Counselor Lee?
Uh right from, right from the start, when you first gave me a phone call, when you were not even, you didn't have the job yet and you were just a candidate for it, um we, we were able to have a really good discussion about your position on uh, on, on, you know, drug addiction and how to, how to combat it, you know, from your perspective. Um your, your personal experiences that you've been through regarding that and um how that's gonna be a top priority for you. Obviously, that was before protests and things like that came down the line. Um but you, you've maintained um the, you've maintained that you value communication. Um and, and I think that's what, that's what's been prevalent throughout the whole process is that you reached out to the people who were angry, you, you reached out to the people who wanted to protest, and you, you know, the police, the police is, the, the role of the police in all this is, is not going to, is not going to be successful if all it is is, is force and intimidation and all that other stuff. For you to, for you to go out there and talk to these people, let them understand you know where they're coming from and, 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 you know, stepping, stepping aside and allowing them to have that voice. Um I got a chance to see that, uh you know, firsthand. And it's just, that's, that's what's gonna be valuable in all this uh when it comes to um bringing, bringing this community uh better. It's, it's having a police department that's actually gonna listen and um be willing to make some changes. And I know that that's not just from you, I know that you have a, a very strong police union that's gonna need to be um you know, uh recognized in all this as well. And I'm just hoping that, that from your perspective, your level of communication um and your, your willingness to communicate with people is going to um, you know, it's gonna, it's gonna rub off on everybody else in the police department, and we're gonna have a more uh, a force that's more in tune with the community. That's, that's what I'm really hoping for down the line. Um and of course, I have some other things that we, that hopefully we'll talk about soon from a legislative standpoint. But until then, I just want to say uh with the rest of my colleagues, congratulations. And I'm hoping, I'm really, really hoping for uh, for some productive uh work uh down the road. So, I yield.
I, I, I believe that uh communication and uh relationship building is more important now in, in policing than it's ever, ever gonna be. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Motion, motion to adopt?
Hold up, we already have the motion on the table, Counselor. There's a couple of other councils would like to speak. Thank you, Counselor Lee, Counselor Pelletier.
Uh Chief, you know, it's been a, a good experience of working with you, nice guy. I'd call you, you'd call me back, we'd try to get things squared away. And I have no problem because I told you that uh all I want is callbacks and if there's something we can do for someone that's got a problem or whatever, that you would try to take care of it. I, I, I know you're a good man, I know you're gonna be a good chief for three years. But you're young, maybe you'll be there for six years, who knows? But uh I'm with you and uh I'm glad to be working with you, congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you, Councilor Kadeem.
Uh thank you, Mr. President. Can I, can I just have somebody from the administration jump on? Is, is Missahadi still here?
Missahadi? I believe she is. Mrs. Sahadi?
I get it. Motion to waive the rules.
Motion to waive the rules has been made by Councilor Kadeem, seconded by Counselor Kilby, roll call.
To waive the rules, Councilors Kadeem?
Yes.
Dion?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Alibidi Laboe?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peckham?
Yes.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Pereira?
Yes.
President Ponti.
Yes. Mrs. Sahadi?
Yes, Counselor.
Okay.
I'm here.
Okay, just uh start your video for us again. Uh Counselor Kadeem, Counselor Kadeem has the floor.
I, I'm here.
So I, I do want to just stop by saying that I, that I agree with my colleagues that, you know, I don't, I don't have a question about um Chief Cardoza's ability to do the job or him in the position, so um there's no question to that. So I do want to say congratulations uh to the chief on, on the appointment. Um I do have some after review on the contract, though I do have some, some questions with regards to uh some of the language that appeared in the contract. Just wanted to kind of get the administration's take on it. So just um first, I, I know there was some discussion about um making sure that the contracts moving forward, that there was some contract language changes, and I, I think I've seen that in, in the actual contract that's before us compared to the uh, the prior contract. Um but in terms of the uh vacation piece, there was thirty days, which equates to six weeks. Uh the language underneath that reads um that the thirty days expires uh December thirty first. So I, I'm assuming um since the contract's being signed on sometime in June, um that's gonna be prorated or, because that's not what the contract reads. So if you read the contract, I know it says uh thirty days per year uh but with the expiration of December thirty first. I just want to make sure that we're not giving them six weeks and then December thirty first, he's getting another six weeks.
Um yes, um so Chief Cardoza, I don't know if you can address this specifically, but it, I'm assuming that the uh mayor and the chief discussed this and it would be prorated till the end of the year.
Yes, there, there's no way that I'm gonna be able to take six weeks vacation. Uh and if I wanted to, I don't want to um before the uh, before this, the end of this year.
No, no, I, I just want to make sure because the language kind of contradicts each other, just, just based on when the, the signing of the contract occurs, that, that's all. I mean, if it was, if it was starting in January, then there's really no issue, but the fact that it's being signed in June, I, I'm assuming he receives all his vacation upfront, so he's, it's not on a accrual basis anyways, right? So it's enough.
That would be correct, that would be correct, Counselor.
I, I, I'm more than pro-raiding.
Okay, I just wanted to, to make sure we were on the same page there. So in terms of all, everything that the um, the chief had with, at, when he was in his captain's position, is that all being bought out? So there's no carryover from the union into the non-union position? So we'll, we'll see a, a buyout for the entire portion of that?
So at the, at the moment, there is an amount due to the chief. Um and we are working with him with regard to whether it's going to be paid out over a number of years. Um again, looking at what our financial situation is at the moment and how we end this particular fiscal year, we'll make that determination with the chief, and he is willing to um wait um if need be, as long as those dollars and those hours are accrued to him going forward.
And what, what would be, at what rate?
I believe it's a hundred and thirty-one thousand, the chief can correct me if I'm wrong.
There were, there were uh two, two options on the table. Um that was the complete buyout, and then there was a buyout option where I retained four hundred and eighty hours of discretionary time. I'm not sure, they would, we were gonna discuss that a little further in the future as to which, which direction I go in. But it was at captain's, uh Counselor Kadeem, I, I'm not sure if this is what you're asking, but it's at captain's, hey?
It's at captain, well, so I was gonna ask both questions, but she answered my second question without me asking it as, as to what, what the dollar amount was. Um and then if it was gonna be worked out with you, at, at which rate would we be paying? So we would, we would be, it would be at the captain's rate at the time of your approval piece and not at the chief's rate?
Yes.
Okay, um I for one would just like to see a clean buyout. I mean, I, I think that's a clean separation, I understand the financial situation, but I, I think we ran into some issues uh with prior contracts from uni- union individuals going into uh contracts and then um, you know, the accrual of time and things of that nature. Uh just, just on, on a, on a side, um you know, when we start looking at this, some of these numbers are, are pretty exorbitant uh in that you, you tend to see that with some of the other uh individuals, the deputies, as they retire, and this is what In that you, you tend to see that with some of the other individuals, the deputies as they retire. And this is what we run into. You know, having to keep people on the books for a year to two years before we can fill the positions because they've got so much time. I, I've stated from day one that we need to really address this, both on the police and fire side. And quite frankly, from all employees, but I think you tend to see it more on the police and fire side. So I, I'd like to get a request as an aside from this to know exactly how much comp time and accrued time people have, all the employees for the town, so that we can see what the balance is. Because I, I think that's the only way we as councillors are really going to see the significance associated with some of this comp time and trying to make sure that we get this under control moving forward.
Certainly councillor. Certainly councillor. No, no problem. Certainly. We started to work on that a couple of years back. And so we can, we can work with the police department and their payroll department to update that. It was a significant amount. If you recall, I believe the prior city administrator came to the council with some thoughts on how to. Pay down or relieve ourselves of that liability. But if I remember correctly, it was about 3.3 million dollars.
Yeah. I mean, it's, it's, I, I think we're seeing was, was up in the hundred thousands. You know, I think DePierre was the same way. I think some of the fire chiefs were the same. You stuck in a couple of deputies at this, you're talking about, and if they want to get paid out and they're not in a situation where they become chief or, or vice versa, I'm sorry, they'd be in the union. You know, captains coming into deputy positions that could be pretty significant, you know, so. You get two retirements and then close to the hundred, you're talking about a $200,000 unfunded liability that, you know, I think, as I mentioned before, we need to start addressing. Just under item F, which I think is page, might be page three. I'm just curious, the police chief legal defense fund, and I'm sure that was language that was in the, in the prior contracts. I'm just curious as to number one, how much we're agreeing to pay for the police chief legal defense fund? And the second piece is why we're paying for it. And the reason I, I question it is, you know, obviously the chief is, and kudos to him for negotiating it and keeping it in the contract, but. That legal defense fund is for his personal use. So. I'm not sure why the city would be paying for a legal defense fund for the police chiefs. Just to have them use it against the city because of the, the assumption was he would need the legal defense funds. If there was either a termination hearing or something like that. So why would we be paying that? Because he's indemnified for every action and duty that he does. While in the role of police chief. So that, that's in his contract. So I don't, I don't know why would we be agreeing to, to pay for a legal defense fund.
I apologize councillor Kadim. I'm, I'm not aware of why. I didn't sit in the negotiations. I don't know Chief Cardoza, if you. Know of any conversations specific to that item. If not, I can check with Corporation Council and the mayor tomorrow and get back to you on. Any discussions that might have been had with regard to that legal defense fund.
So some of the items in the contract, councillor Kadim, were negotiated between Attorney Sabra and Alan Rumsey. The cost for legal defense fund is $250.
A year?
Yes, for a year.
Is that? I mean, is that subject to change? Is there a reason why it's not specifically stated a dollar amount in the, in the contract? Is that something you agree to or is that, is that something that they charge other chiefs?
I'm not sure what other chiefs had in their contracts specifically relative to the legal defense fund. I didn't have any specific conversation about the legal defense fund with Attorney Rumsey. I, I believe that Attorney Sabra did. I have to ask him.
In terms of. The chief not being entitled to overtime, comp time, personal days. And bereavement, I was actually kind of surprised that he's, he's not eligible for personal days and bereavement. I was glad to see, obviously, the overtime is pretty consistent, but. Comp time is, is not part of. What he's entitled to. Is there a reason why we're not giving him bereavement? I just feel like. I know he's getting six weeks and, and it's probably going to cover maybe some personal days, but I don't know why we wouldn't allow bereavement leave.
Again councillor, I didn't, I didn't sit in the negotiations. I can certainly check with the mayor and with Corporation Council. With regard to the bereavement aspect of it. I just got a text message from the HR director. She doesn't have the answer either. So she's obviously watching the meeting. I can certainly get back to you on that, but you know, I do agree that it would be odd that bereavement would be excluded.
Right, okay.
If, if I may, if I may chime in, it did come up and there was some discussion about me leaving a small amount of time. On the books, which obviously the buyout would go down. And then situations like that, I would have that time available if I needed it. God forbid. But if I did, it was there.
So that you would have it? Because the way the contract reads, it says that you're not entitled to bereavement.
Yeah. Leaving, leaving a small amount of time on the books was some time left over as captain. It would be. Comp time, if you will, or group seven. It was a discussion doing that. And that's where I, I was comfortable with not getting specifically a bereavement time. If I was able to leave some time on the books. If I needed a day.
Okay. But that's, listen, that's fine. That raises another question for me that I don't want to, that I don't want to necessarily go into because I don't know that I'd agree to. Give you comp time for bereavement time. That's, that's something completely different, but. So I'll, I'll move on. And then the other thing is, I didn't see anything in, in terms of notice of renewal. Typically, there's some language in there that either the chief or the city would give notification to re-enter into a contract. I think it's only. Only right to protect the chief that he knows going into the situation, whether six months or a year that his contract's up and. Whether or not the city intends to renew the contract. So. I, I'd just like to point that out if we're going to look at some of the other language. The other piece in there is, is there's language for post-employment consulting fee of $450 a day. I'm a little confused by this and I probably understand what the rationale is, is if the chief retires and he's, and he's listed on a case and he's got to go to Superior Court or something like that, he's going to get paid. $450 a day. The rationale doesn't make sense to me because this is a three-year contract. So if he's retired. The contract's no longer in, in existence. So even if he decided that he wanted to go to court and said that we agreed to $450 a day, I don't, I don't think he has a leg to stand on because the, the contract's null and void. So I'm not quite sure why that language is in there, but if, if everybody is fine with that, then so, so be it. But I, I just don't know how you have post-employment benefits on a three-year contract. Where, assuming if he retires after three years. There's no contract to refer to. Outside of that, you know, there's, there's a couple of other minor questions, but I do want to thank, you know, obviously the, the administration and the chief, but you know. Was all encompassing. I'm glad to see that it was, it was all within the base salary. You know, obviously outside of the holiday, holiday pay that's, that's listed there. But for the most part, there's, there's really no other additional stipends so that we can see a true value on, on what's, what's being paid to the chief. So. With those questions, you know, I am going to be supporting it. I wish the, the chief the best of luck. And I, I know he's gonna, he's gonna do a, a good job. He's got a difficult task ahead of him. There's a lot to do and from, as a city councillor, I think there's a lot that I like to see get done to try to kind of rectify. Some, some, some items that have allowed to be cultural and not necessarily, and I don't say that in a bad way, but I, I think things that need to kind of be addressed so that we can. Still standpoint, move the city forward and make sure that the police department is on good financial ground so that. They're considered as lean as possible. So we're not going back to the, to that department looking for cuts when we're more in a situation that. Arises like a COVID-19 or anything, anything like that. So I like to have those conversations with him offline, but I want to congratulate him.
Thank you.
Thank you councillor. Councillor Ferreira? I'm sorry councillor Kadim, do you yield?
I yield.
Yes, thank you. Councillor Ferreira.
The only thing I'd like to add is that the per diem is for if you come back as a consultant. To the city that, you know, if you do that. We have many people who work for the city who come back. And they're getting paid as consultants to come back. That has happened. I think that's what it was. And. I think Attorney Sabra and Attorney Rumsey looking over the contract. And the chief's not getting things that other chiefs have gotten in the past in the contract. And I think that's also a role model to all of the other offices because what councillor Kadim said is right. We can't have people retiring out. And being on the books for extended periods of time, a year or two years. I agree, but I think this is probably one of the better contracts that I've seen. Coming through with not getting as many perks as have happened in the past. And I appreciate that. And I, I really, accolades to Attorney Sabra. He's a very good attorney. And if you are satisfied with the contract that you received. That's fine. The city's certainly not hurting by anything that's in the contract. So congratulations. Continue to make us proud. With that.
Thank you. Thank you councillor. And the only thing I'll say is. This council isn't able to get continued updates from me on what's happening in the city if it wasn't for Chief Cardoza's communication and his abilities. I'm supporting this. I'm going to wish you very well. You have a, a challenging task ahead of you. And, and I, I'm not going to get into the great details of the challenges ahead of you, but you know what they are. Whether it's morale or whether it's working on the comp time situation, which I know there's some collective bargaining things that need to be in consideration and. Management of overtime, you know, and, and there's the possibility. That you may have to, you know, at one point, whether it's this year or next year in the future, have to possibly look at cuts in some areas, not necessarily police officers, but in, in, in terms of management. So. You know, you have, you have a challenge ahead of you, but I think this mayor and the finance team and the, the search committee. Did a fine job of picking you and councillor Dion spoke of your resume. And I, I, I think that your efforts to get to where you're at today should be noted and it's noteworthy. And I appreciate it on behalf of the, the council and behalf of the city. I think you're going to do a great job. So. Councillors have all spoke. I'd just allow you the opportunity, chief, if you'd like to say a couple of words and we'll vote on your contract.
I, I'd just like to say thank you to all of you for the kind words and accolades, but to be quite frank with you. I truly believe it's the hard work is not really mine to do as much as it's the, the men and women that are on the street every night. Those are the people that I'm the most proud of. But thank you for the support and I look forward to working with each one of you in the future.
Thank you. The motion has been made to adopt the chief's contract and seconded. Hearing no further discussion from this council, roll call, madam clerk.
Councillor Kadim?
Yes. Yes. Do you not hear me?
Yes. Kilby?
Hello?
Yes councillor Kilby?
Yes.
La Liberty LaBeau?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peckham?
Yes.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Ferreira?
Yes.
President Ponti?
Yes. Motion carries. Congratulations chief.
Thank you. Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Good luck.
Good night.
Night.
All right, next order of business, madam clerk.
Would be item number 21. Was it, which communication the mayor and the revised FY20 budget for water and sewer divisions?
Item number one for budget of water and sewer divisions. Is there a motion referred to finance?
Appropriate?
The appropriate motion, I would say, refer this item to the committee on finance.
Motion so made.
Point of, point of order, Mr. Chair. So I mean, we, we already had this in finance. It just came back. Just include the 100,000. We've got the fees in, in ordinance, right? So. We're just gonna, are we referring all the budgets back to finance? Because we just referred EMS out.
We did. I mean, is there any further questions from this council to Mr. Furlan? With respect to budget of water and sewer? And if it's the council's will to adopt the budget, we can do that.
Can I just ask through you, Mr. President, to the, to the clerk? Does it make more sense to have everything in finance so we can have a conversation when we're ready to talk about the budget or?
Yes.
Entirely the will of the council.
Right. So are you going to have full council? I guess, Mr. President, are you going to have full, are you going to have finance committee or is it just going to be full council? Because. I guess I would just say, if you're going to have full council, let's just leave it here.
We, we can do that or we can act on it. It'll be one less budget item or budget that we have to go through. We have lots of things to go through. So if you'd like it, we can, we can act on it here. If you want to table it, you can do it here or you can refer it to finance. But I believe there's been quite a bit of discussion. If the council doesn't have any specific questions. With regarding, with regards to water and sewer and you want to act on it now, I'll certainly entertain a motion councillor Kadim to adopt if necessary.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to refer to finance during budget deliberations.
Motion has been made by councillor Kilby to refer the item to finance. Is there a second? Hearing no second, is there another motion? Councillors, is there a motion to adopt? Is there a motion to table?
Yes.
Councillor Ferreira, what's your motion?
This, this FY21 budget, water and sewer division, that includes the. That includes the, the new rates for water and sewer?
Let's bring Mr. Furlan back. Mr. Furlan, we have a motion to waive the rules at this time.
Mr. President, point of, point of information, that, that budget is built on the new rates coming in.
Right, okay. I'm ready to vote on it. I'm ready to vote on it.
All right. Councillor Kilby?
Yeah, the ordinance committee just met tonight, right?
Right.
Okay, so many of us, forgive me, I'm not on ordinances. I know the chair, chairwoman. Did not attend, which is fine. And we all have, you know, reasons why we can't. But the, the budget situation statewide has been delayed for 60 days. Statewide. So I see no reason why we can have more deliberation on this issue. Instead of just acting on it tonight. I know.
Currently councillors.
I'm not, I'm not prepared to, to, to vote on this item right now, telling you the truth.
Fair enough. Councillors, there needs to be, before we can continue this conversation, before we make this even more challenging than it should be. We need a motion to adopt or we need a motion to refer. Councillor Kilby made a motion to refer to the committee on finance. It was not seconded. I need to hear a motion for continued discussion.
Mr. Mr. President, point of information, with, with all due respect, I, I think the problem is, is that we're not having, we're not getting any direction, right? So this is a very. Unprecedented, unprecedented year in terms of how we're going to be doing the budget. So it's not a typical year that we're doing the budget. I disagree with the 112 budget. I think if we're going to just pass this, then. My concern is, is that we're going to push down the operating budget to get a 112 budget, which is in my mind, fiscally irresponsible and not something that I would support. I think we need to stop talking about the budget.
So.
I'm trying, I'm trying to help, I'm trying to help Mr. Kilby, councillor Kilby. I, I. I agree with him. I just, I just think we need a point of information as to what, what the plan is for the budgets, period.
Madam, madam, Mrs. Sahadi, if you could speak on, on that to councillor Kadim's point, it's a valid point.
Certainly. So what you have in front of you this evening is both the water and sewer division. Enterprise fund budgets as well as in finance was the EMS budget. Those budgets are all based on user fees when it's the EMS budget or rates when it's the water and sewer budget. Reason not to pass or not to adopt the enterprise fund budgets prior to June 30 as you have in all of your prior years. The budget in question, if you will, is the city budget as it relates to the uncertainty with state aid.
Yep.
Councillor Kadim, you still have the floor.
Well, I, I think councillor Kilby has the floor. I was just getting a point of information. I'm just. I want to talk on something. I'll give it to Mr. Kilby though.
Councillor Kilby?
And, and I've always said for all the years I served with you, you're the expert on this, not me. But I, I gotta, you know, throw my two cents in. I mean. And if I stand corrected, Mr. Sahadi, but. You know, we, we have to make a decision going on 1/12th or a regular budget. And you're going to give us two versions, right?
No councillor. So for these budgets, for the water, sewer and EMS budgets, you will only be receiving the one budget, an annual budget. For each one of those divisions. For the general fund budget, based on the law that got passed last Friday. You will only be receiving a 1/12 budget.
From the states, are you saying?
1/12, the, the state law that got passed on Friday deals with the extension of time on the operating budget for the general fund.
And it's, it's a 1/12, well, I'm sorry to interrupt you. It's a 1/12 budget recommendation from the state, you're saying, right?
That is correct, but that is for the operating budget, not for these enterprise budgets.
So, well. So, well, I don't want to prolong this conversation, but I just think it's prudent that we need more deliberation as a full council. I speak to Mike Roderick a lot and he's head of House Ways and Means. And I think we're being honest with you. And I know I'm not prepared to vote on this item tonight. And I think it's prudent, since we have a lot of time, to take a step back and just have more conversation. And I think being on finance, I think would be appropriate. So, I'll yield with that, Counselor Kilby and Counselor President.
Counselor Kilby?
So, I agree and disagree with Counselor Kilby. And listen, I might be in the minority. I don't think we have endless time, right? Because number one, and I've said this to Mr. Sahadi and I've said this to the administration, this is probably one of the worst budget years that we've had to deal with. But also, the fact of the matter is that we haven't had any budget discussions up until probably last week or the week before, and it's June 9th, right? So, this is really technically no different when we start talking about state aid. We just know we're uncertain as how devastating the cut in state aid is going to be. It's Chapter 70 on unrestricted local aid. We pass budgets all the time without having a finalized number. My standpoint is that we shouldn't be holding off to a 1/12th budget because the law that was passed allows municipalities that extension. The intent of it is to give another tool, but it's as a last resort. I don't know why this city would even want to entertain a 1/12th budget because the reality of the situation is the 1/12th budget is not taking into consideration any of the revenues. So, we're going to have a 1/12th budget up to potentially three months before we get any indication as to where we are with revenue. Then it's going to come back to the city council. The city council is then going to have to debate all these cuts. And we're already a quarter of the way through the year before we start having to make these cuts. So, and I'm not saying this is the case, but if there are layoffs coming, I'd rather address it now and minimize the number of layoffs that are going to take place as opposed to wait for a full quarter to go by. And if we have to lay off two police officers and two firefighters and five clerical people, it's going to mean it's even more people because a quarter of the salaries have already been paid and we need to make additional cuts. So, the cuts are going to be even more devastating the longer we push this down the road. I personally think we should be sitting down with the school committee. We should be having conversations. We should be sitting down with the administration, talking about what a level funded budget is. I've already had this discussion with the mayor and I got to be quite-
We're saying the same thing as usual.
What's that?
We're saying the same thing, brother, as usual.
No, no, well, me and you, you and I maybe, but that's not what the mayor's saying. The mayor wants to move on a 1/12th budget. I'm telling you that it's fiscally irresponsible for us to do that.
He's not deliberating before we do that.
And the cuts are going to be more devastating if we allow that to take place. We should, we've never once had any conversation to date to know what the true financial picture is of the city. We don't know how much we owe for net school spending to the school department. We don't know what the cuts are going to mean in terms of, you know, I think it's $12 million that we had an increase in Chapter 70, right, from the governor's numbers. So, that's a $12 million reduction if it's level funded. What does level funding mean to the schools and what does that mean to the city? We don't know the true financial picture. And I think for us to continue to kick it down the road and say that we're going to approve a 1/12th budget and we haven't even looked at revenues and we're just going to continue to approve expenses, is irresponsible. I think as a city council, we should be approving a budget and the budget that I, and my suggestion, and again, I've offered up, I've offered up my opinions, my recommendations to the mayor. They continue to go unheard, right? I'm listened to for about five minutes, agreed with for five minutes. And then the next minute, you know, I get, okay, I think we made some headway. It's a good point. And then we're back to where we were before. And so, if you folks want to agree to do a 1/12th budget, that's fine. But I am telling you-
Point of order, point of order, Mr. Kilby. Mayor's communication regarding a 1/12th budget is item four on the agenda. Are we not talking about item one?
We are. We are talking about FY 21 budget for water and sewer divisions. But that all comes into play, that comes all into play, right? So, if we're going to have, if we're going to start talking about cuts, right, you could potentially then start talking about enterprise funds to Counselor Kilby's point. If we need to make cuts in the operating budget, are there expenses that can be pushed over to the enterprise funds? So, to me, it's all relevant. But if we don't want to talk about it, if I had a rocking chair, I'd sit like Leo Pelletier and rock my rocking chair, but I don't have it to.
Again, we're saying the same thing. It's premature for me. I don't have as much financial experience as you, Counselor Kilby, but I think I've been around long enough to be practical, you know, and I voted on many budgets. And I think it's premature for us to even discuss this item right now. We have to have a Committee on Finance, a budget deliberations, and then we make our decisions. That's where I'm coming from, so.
I yield on for President.
I said my piece, so I yield on this issue.
Thank you, Counselor. Is there a motion?
I made a motion to, I'm sorry, I just broke my own rule, right? I just made a motion to refer to finance.
There is a second to the motion.
Second.
I will entertain discussion after the second.
I second.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Lee to refer to the Committee on Finance discussion. Counselor Dion, I see you. Counselor Dion?
Yeah, my question is, I was going to ask if, at this point, it would be appropriate to suggest somehow or make a motion that we get this in two forms, that we get the 1/12th budget and we get a level funded budget with cuts that we can compare and analyze and discuss.
Good point.
You can make that motion now, that's fine. If you want Counselor to wait until we get to the 1/12th part of the budget, we could do that then. It'd probably be most appropriate to do that then so we can have discussions on 1/12th.
I'm going to vote, Mr. President, I think it's appropriate to refer this to finance.
There is a, Counselor, 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 I know, I understand. If we can all just breathe for a moment and understand that it's very challenging for all of us to hear when we're all talking over each other. Counselor Dion, I think it's appropriate that we wait for item four to have that motion. I think, if that's what you feel. Right now, there's a motion on the table to refer the budget of water and sewer as has been made by Counselor Kilby to the Committee on Finance. Is there any discussions on the referral to the Finance Committee? Any further discussion on the motion to refer to finance? Counselor Pereira?
I wouldn't prefer to send it to Finance because this FY 21 budget of water and sewer has an increase on water and sewer. And I don't feel that the people of this city can afford an increase. But if my colleague, Counselor Kilby, doesn't feel, he's able to vote on this right now. He needs more information, then I will support it going to Finance because I wouldn't want somebody to vote on something not knowing all of the facts or having their questions answered. So, I will, Counselor Lee just gave him a second. If he feels that it needs to go there, for me, I'm ready to vote on it now because my vote is no. I don't want water and sewer increases. They tell you it's going to be $20. That's a bunch of malarkey. It comes out being more than that. And I'm not doing that to people right now. People are hurting. With that, I yield.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the referral? Counselor Dion?
Yeah, I concur and agree with Counselor Pereira. I have the same opinion. And basically, that's all I have to say on the matter. And I believe in ordinance, we voted to send it to the council without a finding.
Without a recommendation, right, yep.
With that, I yield.
Thank you. Counselor Lee?
Part of the reason why I'm second, and I am in agreement with Counselor Pereira and Counselor Dion on the fee itself. However, when we made the recommendation, oh, I'm sorry, when we made the motion without recommendation, I think in Counselor Kilby's position and maybe some other counselors, it was just presented to them right now without any opportunity to look things over and discuss it. So, I'm willing to extend that courtesy to the colleagues that are going to be voting on this down the road. So, I yield.
Thank you. Anything further? Hearing none on the motion to refer to the Committee on Finance, Madam Clerk, roll call.
Counselor Sadeem?
Yes.
Dion?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yay.
La Libbidi LaBeau?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peckham?
Yes.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Pereira?
Yes.
President Ponti?
Yes. Motion carries. It's been referred to the Committee on Finance. Next item on the agenda, Madam Clerk.
Item number two is a communication from the mayor and a resolution requesting to amend the boundaries of the waterfront downtown HD zone. Include the Adams House and 1168 Highland Avenue.
Mr. President?
Counselor, I'm sorry?
Mr. President, it's Brad. Should I go to real estate, sir?
I'm actually abstaining from this vote, but Madam Clerk, if you could speak on the appropriate venue or the suggestion of adoption, please.
Counsel can refer the matter if it wishes to, but typically, these resolutions have been acted upon on the floor of the council at their meeting. If you need further information, then you can certainly refer it to committee.
So, Madam Clerk, just for a point of information for the council, does that mean it's been proper practice that they would accept the communication and adopt the resolution? Is that what, it's the usual thing? Okay, just wanted to make sure. I didn't quite hear. Discussion, Counselor Peckham, followed by Counselor.
Before the resolution's adopted, I would like Corporation Council to review this. Point being, questions have been asked in the legality of this. Spot zoning in Massachusetts is illegal. It's been brought up in the past over the purchase of a property. I would like Attorney Ramsey to look over it before we go forward with it to make sure that nothing further comes on down the line. With that, I yield.
Thank you. Counselor Pereira?
Yeah, this is already gone for a public hearing. It's already been vetted out. It's not, you know, the 40A or whatever, it's 40V. We have an HD zone already. This is to encompass that further, which we can do. And that's a way to keep a historic piece of property, to look at a situation where condominiums and other housing can be built. And it gives the individual the ability to get tax credits for going forward with this. But it's already gone to a public hearing. I talked, I had questions on it myself. And I called the city planner, spoke with the city planner to see exactly what this was, how it was done. And this is not spot zoning and it has, it's nothing to do with the other zoning issue that we had before that I felt was spot zoning. This is not constituted as spot zoning. So, I'm ready to prove it, but I yield. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Kilby.
Really quick, could we approve this on a condition that Rosie reviews the matter and comes back with a positive recommendation based on what Counsel Peckham brought up?
Mr. President, if I may, item number seven is the communication from the planning board indicating that the public hearing was in fact held and that the planning board is in favor. They're in full support.
Did Ramsey give anything, Madam Clerk? Any opinion?
That's, perhaps he testified before the planning board, but this is the planning board's, this is the full public hearing that was held. This is their recommendation that there's-
I'll withdraw my motion for real estate. I don't know if I got a second, but.
You did, but is there any, is there another motion on the table?
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt, accept the communication and adopt the resolution has been made by Counselor Pereira. Is there a second? Seconded by Counselor Pelletier. Any discussion? Counselor Kilby?
Is that with the recommendation that Counselor Kilby had mentioned? Just to get, just so that Counsel Peck, I mean, I know that it's a legal stance, but just to make sure that everybody is comfortable on the council that before it moves forward, it would be stipulated that we have a legal opinion from council saying that it's not considered spot zoning?
Is there, is that a motion, Counselor? A motion to amend?
Yeah, I mean, if that wasn't Counsel Pereira's motion, I was just trying to figure out if that was, that her motion included that. If it didn't-
As a point of information, Counselor Pereira, is your motion to accept the communication, adopt the resolution and get an opinion from Corporation Council?
No, I mean, my emotion was simply to adopt. It's been through a public hearing. The planning board has voted unanimously for it. They don't think there's anything wrong with it. The city plan is on board. You know, the packets come in. If somebody had a question on legality, call Attorney Ramsey before the meeting. Look at your agenda and call people. I call people and ask questions all the time. If somebody's going to feel more comfortable having Attorney Ramsey give an opinion, I don't have a problem with that either. I want all my colleagues to be comfortable on the votes that they take.
I'd like to amend the motion to include that we get a legal opinion before it gets passed stating that it is not considered spot zoning.
Second.
Motion to adopt the communication that has been made by Counselor Pereira. There is a motion to amend that motion to also include receiving a legal opinion from Corporation Council that it is not spot zoning.
I second that.
Mr. President, if you're adopting the resolution, I'm not certain that you can adopt it and also request a legal opinion. If you're adopting it, you're adopting it. Would it be-
Prior to the adoption, that it would be adopted, given the fact that with a letter from legal saying that it's not spot zoning.
Would it be best to table the matter until you receive that opinion?
Oh, I mean, we could, but I would assume that, you know, Attorney Ramsey would be able to turn that around in a day. I wasn't trying to hold up anything, but.
Okay, okay.
Right now, we have a motion. I haven't heard any other, Counselor Kilby, do you have a motion at that point that has been seconded by Counselor Lee to adopt the communication?
Yeah, it was adopt, it was adopt the communication subject to a legal opinion stating that the order that was being, or the resolution that was being adopted is not considered spot zoning.
That's an appropriate motion that's been seconded by Counselor Lee? Is there any additional discussion?
Just for discussion, I mean, just because it went through and just talk about the process, just because it went to planning and it had a public hearing, doesn't make the action legal, right? Because planning, you know, and I'm not saying our planning board does it, but there are planning boards that adopt things that are illegal all the time or are not in accordance with, you know, Massachusetts general law. So, they need to be corrected. And there's also no guarantee that it was sent to legal. I understand, you know, Counselor Peckham's concern. I'm confident that it's not considered spot zoning, that we've been through this, but in order to make sure that everybody's on the same page, let's just get a letter stating that it's not spot zoning and then it passes automatically. It's not. I yield.
Counselor Pereira?
I did speak to the city planner today and he did send me an email. As I stated when we spoke earlier today, the planning board conducted a public hearing as required by Massachusetts general laws, Chapter 40V, and determined that this will, this amendment will advance the goals of the Housing Development Incentive Program under 40V by promoting residential growth, expanding diversity of housing supply, neighborhood stabilization, economic development. It would also facilitate the restoration of a significant historical structure. Therefore, the planning board voted unanimously to recommend that it go to the city council. This is not a case of inappropriate spot zoning. Spot zoning is in connection with Chapter 40A, not Chapter 40V. So, that's what I got from him and I'm going by what the city planner sent.
Thank you, Counselor.
That I yield.
Counsel Vice President, LaBeau?
Thank you. Madam Clerk, is there a timeline on this?
There doesn't appear to be, Counselor.
That dissatisfied Counselor Peckham and I agree. Why don't we just table it and have Corporation Council come to our next meeting and he can explain it? And then everyone can be comfortable with their vote.
Go, yes.
Is there a motion to table, Counselor?
Motion to table.
Motion to table has been made by Counselor-
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Dion. No discussion on a motion to table, roll call.
On a motion to table, Counselor Sadeem?
No.
Dion?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
La Libbidi LaBeau?
Yes.
Yes.
Peckham?
Yes.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Pereira?[1744.18]
No.
President Ponti?
Abstain.
Motion carries. The motion carries.
Items been tabled.
Item number four is a communication in an order regarding a 112 budget continuing appropriation for FY 2021.
Can we, on the motion to refer to the Committee on Finance that has been made by Counsel of Pereira, seconded by Counsel Kilby, I would like to see if it's possible, if it's the will of the committee to waive the rules, to have Madam, Mrs. Sahadi?
I'm moved.
President Pont, I didn't make a motion to send this anywhere.
I'm sorry. I thought I saw your hand raised. Counselor.
Raised to speak. I didn't make a motion.
Refer to finance. Motion, I'm sorry. Counsel Kilby made a motion to refer to finance, seconded by?
Second.
Counsel Vice President LaBeau, that's the motion to refer to the Committee on Finance. Prior to doing that, we have a motion by Counselor Kadeem to waive the rules so we can have some questions asked to Mrs. Sahadi. Is there a second to Counsel Kadeem's motion to waive the rules?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Lee on the motion to waive the rules. Roll call.
To waive the rules, Counselors Kadeem?
Yes.
Dion?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
LaLiberty LaBeau?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peckham?
Yes.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Pereira?
Yes.
President Ponti?
Yes. Counselor Pereira, floor is yours.
The way I feel, and I listened to everything that Counsel Kadeem said earlier about the month-to-month budget. I say go with a month-to-month budget for at least two months to know where we're going to stand. To lay people off or do anything like that when we don't even know the amount of money we're going to get in. We don't know what the $7.8 million from COVID is eligible to be used for. Why not wait, do it this month and next month? Do month-to-month. You know more or less, Mrs. Sahadi knows what the expenditures are in the departments for those two months. And then you plan it out for the rest of the year. I'm not going to vote on a budget with fantasy numbers, with numbers I don't know. I'm not doing that. And then we're going to come back and be switching things around or laying people off now when there may be no reason to do that? And get people upset and figure it out first. Get all the numbers first. I am absolutely 100% supportive of going month-to-month. With that, I yield.
Thank you, Counselor. And while we have Mrs. Sahadi here, I know, I'd like to just speak on this if I may. Mrs. Sahadi, last night, the school committee had a meeting from which I understand they had a pretty solid debate last night with respect to going 112. Could you, could you speak to the, was there a 7-0 vote last night of the school committee with respect to going 112?
Yes, Council President. I wasn't at the meeting. I did not zoom in. I actually had another meeting I had to attend. But it's my understanding it was a 7-0 vote to go to a 112 budget. But I just want to correct everyone with the discussion of 112 just for a moment because I had a long conversation today with Senator Roderick's. It is not a 112, or it's not intended to be a 112 budget, 112 of 2020's budget, or 112 of what you expect 2021's budget. The anticipation and what the state is actually doing, Senator Roderick's is actually doing is to look at needs for the month of July and to vote a budget based on those needs. So in our case, the administration is certainly prepared not to hire or fill any vacant positions. But there are certain needs within the first month of the year that will exceed 112 if you look at that particular budget by itself. And the example I can give you right off the top is the Munis bill, which is $352,000, is due during the month of July. That is more than 112 of the IT department's budget. On the flip side of that, insurance, our property insurance is not due until November. And so in the July budget that we presented to you while we await clarification on the CARES money, as well as we await the House and the Senate and the Conference Committee to provide us with more details on the state aid, that money, those monies for the property insurance is not included in the July budget. So we went through each of the items within the July budget and presented those needs that we have for the month of July without going aboard in the sense of without adding positions, without filling positions. So we took a conservative, I think Senator Roderick's said it well today. The state is taking a conservative approach without being disruptive. So that's the same approach we're taking here in the city. We don't know necessarily what our aid's going to be. We don't know, the state doesn't know. The state does not know. You know, again, discussion with Senator Roderick's, the state does not know whether or not the federal government is going to provide them with some relief as well. And if they do, that relief can be passed down to the municipalities. He, meaning Senator Roderick's, is recommending to all of his communities that they vote what's referred to as the 112 budget or the July budget. I mean, we're all hopeful that decisions can be made during the month of July with relate, as it relates to state aid, but we don't know. Certainly, the governor, or should I say the House and the Senate, when they passed this law, had the intention, obviously, to make some serious decisions or hard decisions on their part prior to the end of July or by the end of July. Because the way that particular law is written, it's within 60 days of the end of the declaration of emergency or July 31st, whichever comes first. So since we're sitting here on June 9th, we know that 60 days is beyond July 31st. So we will, we will be looking at having a budget prepared by July 31st in conjunction with what the law is.
All right, Madam, Mrs. Sahadi, I appreciate that. I want to just make a couple of points while I have the floor and then I'll let the council speak regarding this. And I know this isn't coming to a surprise to you, Mrs. Sahadi, what my comments are going to be, nor is it kind of come to a surprise of the mayor, okay? First off, the, before I get into that, the school, the school department in the FY 21, 112 budget that we have in our package, which is Page 40 of our packages, states that we are going to be giving the schools in the month of July $3.6 million. Is that correct?
The mayor put together the operating budget at $3,330,000 and transportation needs for the month of July of $300,000.
Okay, but that is inconsistent, Mrs. Sahadi, with the vote that the school committee took last night. The school committee took a vote last night, 7-0, to go to a 112 budget on $162 million, a level-funded budget from the school department for the month of July. And, and I watched the meeting because there was some mixed discussions about it in the community today and some people that I spoke to. Mr. Aguirre and Mr. Costa, both members of the school committee, made it pretty clear to Mr. Almida and the superintendent and the mayor that we are not doing, there was a discussion that apparently was had, which I tried to piece together between the city's finance team and the school's finance team, but there was no vote taken by the school committee last night, up until last night, on a budget for a 112 budget. So what that means is we have a 112 budget that is presented to us here tonight. The school committee voted a 112 budget on a level-funded budget. So that's $162 million divided by 12, which is $13.5 million. So the number that we have in this document isn't correct if I'm following the school committee's vote that took place last night. And again, I watched it. Mr. Aguirre and Mr. Costa both took exception to the fact that we have a, the city council has a budget before them tonight of about $3.6 million. So, and granted, I'm not trying to micromanage here, but it's the finance team on the city side and the finance team on the school side had a meeting, but the school committee wasn't aware of the vote up until last night when they voted a 112 budget on a level-funded budget, which if people don't know, who's watching at home, a level-funded budget is the budget from the year that we're currently in, in 2020. So this number that we have here is already inaccurate and the numbers aren't correct.
With all due respect, Council President, the number you have in our July budget is in fact correct. It came from Kevin Almeter. It will be the only amount or amount similar to that that will be approved by the Department of Local Services, Sean Cronin. The object of the, and I'm not sure what the debate was with regard to the school department's discussion with dividing the 162 million by 12. That is not the spirit of what the month-to-month budget is intended to be, nor is it what the Department of Local Services will approve in order to go forward with the continuing appropriation. This is a continuing appropriation. It is not a budget. And that's where the confusion apparently may be coming in with regard to certain members of the school committee.
Yes, but we won't go back and forth about this specific item, but I'm telling you that the school committee voted last night, 7-0. The mayor voted with the school committee to do a level-funded budget. So I believe, it's, it's my opinion, and I'm not an attorney, but I believe that the school committee, who is the executive branch of the school department, needs to have a financial say in the financial monies that are coming to the school department. So, so whether there's a conversation had with the finance team on the city side and the finance team on the school side and not brought to the school committee's attention for them to take appropriate action, I don't believe is the right way to go. And granted, I don't also believe that we need to vote on this tonight because at the next joint meeting that we have before us, and I know there's some counselors waving their hands here, but there's, there's, there's a discussion that needs to be had and now let's get the appropriate number here. Because the school committee's vote and the city, city's finance team and the school finance team aren't on the same page. So I just want to, I just want to end it by saying this. I don't believe that going to a 112 budget is what's healthy at this point. I recognize the fact that Governor Baker, who's done a fine job, has, as well as our delegation with respect to doing an extension for budget preparation. But if you read the statute that is, that was signed by the governor, I read it a little differently than it's being portrayed here tonight. I read the statute where it says, "A month-to-month budget, 112, in the event that the city is unable to approve an operating budget for a fiscal year because of circumstances beyond its control." Well, I don't believe that there are circumstances that are beyond our control because the legislative body is here. The legislative body is prepared to vote. And the legislative body is prepared to unfortunately have to probably make some tough decisions. And Counselor, I believe that one of the counselors said early on when we're talking about the water and sewer, if we kick this can down the road for a quarter of the fiscal year, the picture is going to be much more darker for us. And I think we're playing, just my opinion, and I know we all respect each other's opinion on this, Counsel, but I don't, I think it's very dangerous. It's very, very dangerous for us. You know, when, when we have the uncertainty that's before us, we need to acknowledge here, I believe, my opinion, that there is going to be less money in state aid. We could say a prayer and we can hope that we get a whopping amount of money of state aid. I just don't see it coming. And, and, and I want to be on record by saying that we could have debate, we can have discussion, but there's some murky times ahead. And we need to acknowledge that here today. And it's my opinion that we should have a level-funded budget going into 2021. And if that means it's 10%, a reduction of 10%, then conversations need to be had with respect to where we are financially. Counselor Dion has made, and Counselor Kadeem and other counselors throughout the years, I know Counsel Kilby spoke about this before as well. We need to have a financial picture of where we are for trash. How are we collecting our trash? Are we still collecting trash on six families? Are we still having these discussions when it comes to talking to our collective bargaining units about maybe taking 0%? I mean, these are things that we need to have, but there needs to be an overall picture for us to have a healthy debate about it. And, and again, I'll conclude by saying, the mayor and you, Mrs. Sahadi, know my position, right? We've had healthy, professional, great, great debates about it. And I appreciate your work and I know what you guys are trying to do. I just, I strongly disagree. So any 112 budget that comes before the council, I'm, I'm going to be opposed for. Counselor Kadeem, you had your hand raised, followed by Counsel.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, Ms. Sahadi, I'm just going to ask, what changed since Thursday? I mean, you were in agreement that we shouldn't be doing a 112 budget.
So on Thursday, so what changed on Thursday is Friday, the, the vote was taken or I should say the bill was signed by the governor, so it gave us some leeway. And our conversations with Senator Roderick's reiterated the concern that he has with all the committees that a 112, and I hate to keep referring to it as that, but a July budget makes more sense while the Senate and the House both deliberate what the remaining budget is going to look like for the next year. Again, his words were conservative without being destructive. And I think that's what we're doing here. We're not being destructive in the way of potentially looking at layoffs that may not be needed and instead not filling vacant positions. So we have a number of vacant positions in, particularly in the two public safety departments, and we're not filling those positions at this particular time until we really see what our, what our federal aid is. Something we heard today was that it may be leveled in terms of state aid for the general municipal aid, but yet Chapter 70 may actually get an increase over the prior year. So we're all trying to be conservative. The superintendent and the finance team on the school side is trying to be conservative and looking at the July expenses in transportation. Sean Cronin, who as you know is the director of the Department of Local Services, is working with each of us. I've actually already presented to Mr. Cronin what I believe 112 will be and he's looked at it and has, has, has somewhat approved it in the sense that he agrees with the way I presented it and said that's what he's expecting from the communities. If you look at the 112 and you, and you look at the definition based on what the MMA is saying, what DLS is saying, and certainly what the senator is saying, is it's supposed to represent the month of July. And anything that is more than 112 in explanation is needed. And in my case, or in our case, I should say, what we did was we also provided an explanation for anything that's less than 112.
Can I just, can I just jump in because, so, so the only thing that really changed, because you already submitted the 112 to us. We knew that that law was going to pass. So the only thing that changed is that Mike Roderick's is coming up to us saying, please do a 112 budget? That's the only change. That's, that's literally the only thing that changed from Thursday to now because you submitted a 112 budget knowing that we were going on a 112 budget. You were not in favor of a 112 budget. Now, this is my frustration. You know, we constantly get, you know, when I ask a question, you know, we walk the line. You and the mayor, in the meeting with myself and Counsel President, were in agreement that a 112 budget did not make sense because I articulated what the concerns were. Now, all of a sudden, we have a change of mind. This happens all the time. This is my frustration. So I'm going to ask a question. You just said that Mike Roderick says that they're trying to get level-funded for unrestricted local aid. Right? Okay, so we just asked for a level-funded budget. So that would mean local aid would be level-funded, okay? We may see a slight increase in Chapter 70. Okay, so if we did a worst-case scenario and level-funded Chapter 70, then if, if there wasn't increase in the funding, then we can come back at the council at the very next council meeting and appropriate that money so that the schools or whatever department could then appropriate that money as to what they're going to, what they need it for, right? So you're saying you're not going to fill any, any budgets, any vacancies in, in public safety? So if we did a level funding, that would still take, take place. You're not going to have layoffs. You're not just, you're just not going to fill the vacancies.
But we may, if it's, if it's level-funded, we may not want to look in that direction. We may want to leave public safety positions open and be filled at a later time. And we may want to look at layoffs in other departments. We have the opportunity.
Have we done that yet?
Please?
Have we done that yet?
Done what yet?
Have we looked at all the options? Have we looked at what a level funding, a level-funded budget looks like? Have we done that? Have you folks on your side prepared to look at it to see what the actual cuts would, would mean?
We have looked at what level funding would look, look like. We haven't specifically sat down and discussed where the cuts may come.
So when do we have, so let me ask, let me, let me backtrack. Would you agree with me that if we receive, let's say we receive level funding, which would be cuts, let's just assume. We don't take this, we don't take the vote now to vote a budget at level, level-funded for state aid. And we wait one or two months, three months, whatever the case may be. So that's, that's a quarter of the year that's gone. would would the cuts that would be required at that time be more than if we we actually passed the budget right now?
I don't know whether or not any of the CARES money, the 7.9 money.
No, 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 I'm just asking, I'm just asking, without the CARES money, without the CARES money.
But that plays, that plays into it.
No, it doesn't. No, no, what it plays into is a structural deficit. You and I both know that because the CARES money is one time money. So you want to continue to kick the can down the road and stop putting one time money in the budget and start having, you know, a fiscal irresponsibility and create structural deficits, that's fine. All I'm asking is, let's just take the assumption right now, just to put everything on the table. If level funded, if the council wants to pass a level funded budget, and that's exactly what transpires in three months, the cuts that would be needed right now in June, would those be the same exact cuts in September?
I can't answer that at this point.
Yes, you can. You can, you know you can. You got, the answer is no, right? Because you've already lost a third of the year on expenses that you can cut and salaries that have already been paid. So you and I both know you can answer the question, you just choose not to because you don't want to answer the question. Would you, so the statement is, if I were to make cuts in June for July, for fiscal year 21, or if I had to make cuts in September for fiscal 21, would the cuts be more devastating? The same dollar amount, the same dollar amount? If if I say we got to cut $5 million in July and then we got to cut $5 million in September?
If we're spending and we're not filling positions, it would not be any more devastating. And it may actually be worse because we may have been be incurring the cost of unemployment now that may not be necessary.
Right, right, okay, all right. So we're just going to mislead councillors that have never done a budget before and are not familiar with with the operating budget to tell them that it's not going to have a potential to be more devastating. So for the record, if we could, if the clerk, if you can mark this on a note, because I will be asking you for this in September, the exact time, it's June 9, 2020, 9:14, you can go back to your minutes, I want to, I want to be able to have something on record saying that the administration said that the cuts would not be more devastating in September. So when we're laying more people off come September because we should have been preparing for a leveled services, level funding in June, and we just chose to kick the can down the road like we always do because that's Fall River, right? That's what Fall River does. Fall River continues to kick the can down the road, hoping we're going to get a bailout, hoping we're going to get one time money. That's what we do, right? And if you all want to continue to do that and wait for the CARES Act and hope that, you know, net school spending is going to be reduced and all this other stuff, as opposed to saying, okay, listen, let's take level funded, let's see what the cuts are, and let's have those conversations. Because we as councillors need to know exactly what that means. Does that mean five police officers? Does that mean five firefighters? Does that mean 10 clerical staff? Or do we want to try to work things out or change things around? Because by the time we get to this conversation, there are going to be more police, more fire, more people laid off. And if it's not this year, then it's going to be an FY22 because that's going to be worse when we don't have CARES money. And then the state aid is not where it needs to be, and then you're not getting your level funded on on state aid at that point, right? So we can continue to kick it down the road. It may not be now, just just like the Jayson administration. It was a house of cards, and we were financially perfect. Look where we're at now, right? It's the exact same thing. I for one will not be partaking in this. One twelfth, it's easy for a senator who's on Ways and Means telling everybody to hold what's going on because they don't need to go and tell the firefighters to to get laid off or whatever the case may be. We are a legislative body. We haven't had a budget conversation until June 9. This is the first time we're having a conversation about this. We've never been brought in to talk about, okay, what's the true financial picture? There is not one city councillor that is on this Zoom meeting right now that can tell anybody in the community, anybody amongst us as colleagues, anybody on the school committee, what our financial picture is. Because we've never been told that financial picture. There is so much that we should be having conversations. Council President already alluded to it. We've been talking about trash for how long? And we continue to see the waste of money going on there. But, you know, come in September, we're going to be talking about laying off police, right? When are we going to start having conversations about this budget while we only have 10 man crews for a 12 sector city? And we've got, we've got vacancies that are not being filled. When are we going to have those conversations? When are we going to have conversations about the state grants that are coming down that are not paying for the overtime, whether it's the the safer money that I've said before, or actually the safer went to back to salaries, which went back to salaries? We've got, we've got the EYAS grant that's paying for overtime that's not going to be there from the state. There's going to be more devastation, so we're just going to continue to kick the can down the road and get to a point where we're back to the retirement board. We can't fund our retirement because we kept on pushing and pushing and pushing because we need money. We owe $1 million right now to the schools. We can't pay the schools right now, and it's even more than $1 million. We cannot give the school department $1 million because we do not have $1 million to give to the school department right now. Is that not accurate?
That is not accurate, councillor.
So, okay, so we choose not to give $1 million to the school department because we are concerned that we do not have enough money to give them. Was that a little bit more accurate?
I think that conversation needs to be made with the superintendent as well as the administration with regard to the potential net spending shortfall.
Okay, so so the potential, so we we know right now that it's $1 million and it's going to be north of $1 million, and we're not giving to them. Why was it again, and maybe through a council president, you were at the meeting, what was, what was the mayor's reasoning as to why we're not going to give $1 million, even though he committed $1 million to the to the schools? So he committed to give $1 million for the shortfall in net school spending, has changed his mind on that. He sent down a one twelfth budget and then just took a vote last night, which contradicts the budget that he sent down to us. So, Mr. President, what was the reason for not being able to give the schools $1 million?
There was a conversation that occurred last night. The mayor misspoke when he spoke to Mr. Aguirre with respect to transferring the $1 million. The mayor did commit that the city is going to be sending the schools over the money, just not right now.
Why not right now?
That I can't answer.
So why not right now?
Mrs. Sahadi?
As to why not right now, I don't think I can necessarily answer the why not, but there are a couple of reasons.
No, no, stop, no, no, I want a simple answer. Why not right now? I know why not right now, you just don't want to say it. I want to hear it. Why not right now?
I don't know what the answer to be.
Where's the $1 million? Do we have $1 million to give them?
In healthcare.
So why haven't we transferred it over to them?
We have had conversations with the superintendent, and we are working with them as to what their needs are with regard to both healthcare, both their budget and.
But who cares what their needs are? We owe them $1 million. We're short $1 million. We're going to be short even more than that. Why haven't we transferred that in sooner so that they can actually spend it this year?
I can't answer that, councillor.
Can I say something? This is crazy.
It's not crazy. It's not crazy. It's, it, listen, councillors can say that this is crazy. What's crazy is that we've never been given a financial picture of a city. That is crazy. You want to disagree with me, that's fine. I yield.
Councillor, Vice President Lebo. Nope, Councillor Perri.
The only thing is, I understand part of what Councillor Kadeem is saying, but if you are talking about doing something in September or, you know, that you're going to be doing a month to month for several months, I would have an issue with that. All I'm saying is if we can do a month to month for June and July, just those two months to see what money does come in, what we have, what we can use certain money on, go from there. You know, to start laying people off or do this or that, when, we don't know. We don't know what other money we're going to get. And yes, is it going to be tough next year too? I agree with you, Sean. It will be tough next year too. But all I'm saying is, for two months, I can't really vote on a budget like you're saying, okay, let's vote on the whole budget and then we'll make changes along the way. Let's take cuts now, do this, do that. I don't think that that's fair to people. I think you've got to wait and see. We don't know what we're getting. And if you have Sean Cronin saying, you know, that they're going month to month, the governor is allowing places to go month to month, Mike Rodrick is saying it's going to be tough. No, you don't have to listen to anything that any of those people say, but frankly, those people want to help the cities and towns in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. I'm willing to vote on a month to month. If you want to stipulate month to month for two months, and then we have to do something, I'm okay with that too. But to think that we're going to be month to month until September or October or November, yeah, that, I concur with you that if we do have to lay people off at that point, you're going to end up laying a lot more people off. So I get that picture too. But to be arguing about it, maybe we need to, you know, get more briefings on the budget or something like that, if people feel more comfortable with that, discuss it more in finance. But I really think a month to month, just for two months, is the way to go. Even if we say we'll do month to month, ending on, you know, the last day in July, and at that point, we need to have a budget just because, I mean, if the governor's allowing it in all these communities, everybody is in the same position that we're in, and we don't know what's going to happen. With that, I yield.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Peckham.
Mrs. Sahadi, just one question, and Council President Ponti brought it up. With the vote with the with the school department last night, and then they come up with one number, and then we're giving another number today, does their vote become null and void? Does it not coincide with our vote with the the one twelfth budget? What what happens with their vote in particular?
The way I understand, the way I understand it, Councillor Peckham, is their vote is is an internal vote with regard to their budget. They will not be spending $9 million, and I don't know the number right off the top, but I believe it's $9 million. They will not be spending $9 million in the month of July. The month to month budget process, as it was presented by the Department of Local Services, Sean Cronin being the director, is the July budget was supposed to represent the needs of the community for the month of July. So we are not going to be spending $9 million worth of operating expenses in or schools during the month of July. And so as a result, I do understand that they took a vote last night. I was not part of that conversation. I was not at that meeting. Had I been at that meeting, I would have described to the school committee what the intention of the Department of Local Services was going to be, because this all needs to go to DLS and be approved after your continuing appropriation is voted. So if if you vote, if we provide a budget that is well in excess of one twelfth of the FY20 budget, the Department of Local Service is not going to approve it. If you look at the document that I provided to the council, the budget, the July budget is actually less than one twelfth of the 2020 budget. In July and August, in each year, the school department does not have the expenditures that are equalling one twelfth of their budget. They spend the majority of their budget in a 10-month period starting in the month of September. So I'm not exactly sure about why or what the discussion was for their vote. I can certainly speak with the superintendent, but at the end of the day, the vote that counts is your vote when it relates to the appropriation for the school department.
And just to councillor, just to councillor Peckham's point, you know, and to kind of highlight on it, I'm just going to make it clear. The the motion last night from the school committee that was made by Mr. Aguirre was if the city goes to a one twelfth budget, that the school department, school committee voted to have a level funded budget on one twelfth, on real money, $162 million of their budget. That's what happened last night. I just want, I don't want there to be any confusion. So if there was a conversation, like I said earlier, with the city's finance team and the school's finance team, and you didn't let the executive branch on the school side know what was going on, that's a bigger issue that you guys need to figure out and come back to us. I'm just telling you that the vote that was taken from the school committee cannot be ignored. It was a seven nothing vote last night, and they said they were going to, if the city went to a one twelfth budget, that they are going to be expecting their 13.5 or 10 or 12 million, not three, for the month of July. So I, you know, to Chris, councillor Peckham's point, we need to be on the same page and be consistent here because what happened last night and what we're talking about today are two totally separate things. Councillor Peckham, you have.
Mr. President, just point of order, too. The mayor is the chairperson of the of the school committee. He voted in it. He voted in favor of it.
That's correct.
One of the issues I have also is I did have, which I thought, I'm new to this, as it was mentioned, councillor Kadeem did mention, I am new to this budget process. I thought I had my mind made up and up until now, to be honest with you, just the back and forth on where the $1 million that was going to the school department, where that went. It took him asking four or five times before it finally came out that it went to, I believe he said, healthcare. Is that correct, Mrs. Sahadi?
Well, that's where the, that's where the savings in the budget is currently residing in the sense that the reason there is a shortfall in net school spending is, as you know, there has been a lot of savings, if you will, with regard to health insurance because staff, employees have not been able to incur the healthcare that they may have been able to incur prior to the pandemic.
Now, the question I have is, is if, if we don't give it to them now, we're going to have to give it to them down the road somewhere, correct? So why hold on to it in healthcare, what we're not really spending right now, and meet net school spending with that $1 million?
That's a conversation that the administration and the superintendent has been having with regard to the possibility of there being a waiver for net school spending for fiscal 20 because of all of the uncertainty and all of the lack of school, lack of transportation, all types of things that happened in fiscal 20 that are significantly different than any other year that has existed.
Without dragging this on, and I don't mean to cut you off, Mrs. Sahadi, I apologize, but when he, when councillor Kadeem asked why it was being held in healthcare, you said you didn't know. And now I'm being told that it's just being held there because we have some buffer room with within the healthcare because it wasn't utilized to the maximum amount. Am I correct?
And the reason I said I didn't know, councillor, is that there is no, there's no exact amount, and some of the change in net school spending could simply be the fact that the budget didn't make net net school spending in the first place. Some of it could be health insurance. We are on, we are still, health insurance gets paid two months in the rears, so we just paid the first bill that included any effect of the pandemic. So it, it's really two months out before we really know what the total effect is. The way the healthcare works in the city budget is, we budgeted amount, I believe it was $39 million last year, and we transfer that entire $39 million in the healthcare trust fund. Last year, what happened prior to the end of the year, when we did the last transfer, was we utilized some of that excess money, if you will, to shore up the school department's budget. Having conversations with the superintendent just the other day, he wanted to be sure, basically, that the school department could utilize this money, as as he indicated, and I believe his finance person, Mr. Almeida, indicated, they couldn't use it right now anyway if they got it. They don't have the need to spend the money prior to June 30. So since we have until October, when the end of the year report is finalized, we theoretically have until October to make the final transfer.
So what happens if something happens in the meantime where we need that money, and then in October we don't have it?
Well, it'll be in the, it'll be in the healthcare trust fund. So it won't be that we won't have it.
Okay. Not to use the word transparency, I'm, again, new to this this budget process. And the back and forth between you and councillor Kadeem, it took a while to get an answer that finally came out. So that's why I have an issue when I'm asking the questions. I don't mean to be disrespectful by saying that at all. It's just now it's, it's confusing. It really is. With that, I yield, Mr. President. Thank you very much. Ms. Sadi, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Kilby. Just on you, councillor? On you?
I think it's been a great debate, and and these things need to be discussed, obviously. We're, you know, we're serving close to 90,000 people in this city, Mr. President. And that's why I stated, I think maybe these financial matters should be either tabled or referred to finance. And I will add this, too. We have at our disposal probably the fourth most powerful individual in state government. Mike Rodrick is the head of House Ways and Means, and he actually could articulate a lot to probably the largest city, I think, that he's. And he actually could articulate a lot to, to probably the largest city, I think, that he serves. So I would ask that, um, these financial matters, um, either be tabled or referred to finance. And we invite Senator Rogers, Rogers down. And he can give us some really solid legitimate questions, I mean, answers, and very no disrespect to you, um, uh, with, with regard to the financial picture and how we should have, you know, proceed, whether a 1/12th or a level funded budget. Because, you know, quite frankly, like I said, I love the debate between Counselor Kadim and, and Ms. Sahadi. And, um, I'm not prepared to vote on, on, on the 1/12th at this point in time. Ayeel.
Thank you, Counselor, Counselor Lee, followed by Counselor Dion.
Uh, Mr. Sahadi, we, uh, we were, we were fortunate enough to talk about this a few days ago beforehand. And, um, with the discussion that you just had with Counselor Kadim a little while ago, we learned that you were not in favor of the 1/12 budget. Can I, can I get where your mindset was then before this vote came in that changed your mind? Before this conversation with, uh, the senator changed your mind? Why, what were the, what were the cons, uh, for a 1/12 budget? And do they still apply right now?
Um, certainly, Counselor. So, um, I'm not necessarily going to say I wasn't in favor of the 1/12 budget. I, I clearly was in favor of it in the sense that you already had it in your pot packet. It was already delivered to you. Uh, what I agreed to with, um, Counselor Kadim and Council, Council President Ponte, um, when we had the meeting with the mayor, was if we had a level funded budget, what would that budget look like? Um, why we, I didn't go forward with that at this particular point was after having conversations with the senator. Um, because at that particular point, I believe Counsel Kadim could correct me if I'm wrong, or, or Counsel President, is they were talking about a 10% cut over the prior year budget. So a 10% cut over the last year budget, not level funded. So now we're talking a completely different, um, set of documents, if you will. So we had the document, the initial document that you had in front of you that we have currently withdrawn, which was the May 15th, that included the governor's 2021 numbers. Um, then there was a discussion, as, as you can hear, um, from the council. And Counsel Kadim can correct me if I'm wrong. But there was a discussion with regard to, um, a 10% cut over the prior year budget. That's significant. Now there's a discussion about the prior year budget being level funded. There are too many uncertainties at this particular time to really be able to provide you with the proper budget document. It doesn't, or that won't need to be revised going forward. And so what changed was back to the 1/12 budget or the July budget that you'd previously received. Um, a lot of discussion with that at the MMA meetings, a lot of discussion with that, um, with, um, the Department of Local Services, Sean Cronin. And certainly, um, the discussions most recently with the senator as it relates to, um, presenting the 1/12 or the July budget. And so that's what, um, caused me not to continue down the path because I'm not sure at this particular point whether or not it makes sense to level fund. Because that's not what we talked about with, um, Counselor Kadim and Counselor Ponte. We talked about a 10% cut. That's significant when you are looking at, um, 20 some odd million dollars. I think last year we received 23 million dollars in local aid, 24 million dollars. I'm, I don't have the number right in front of me. Um, but that's significant. So 10% is significant. And why, if we don't know what that outcome's going to be, would we want to look at that right now and instead be conservative? Don't fill those vacant positions. Don't do any increases in capital. Don't spend any money on any unnecessary expenditures. Just spend money in the month of July on those things that are necessary to keep the operations of city government going forward. And that's, that's the, the whole point of the July budget.
So, um, along the way, Counsel President, um, presented some things to the, to the discussion that, um, seems like it complicates the situation a little bit. Um, how, if we're going to, I mean, uh, are you, do you address that? Do you feel like that's something that should be addressed? That, um, maybe we should put this on hold and talk to members of the school committee to make sure that there isn't a clash, that there isn't some kind of problem? Um, because I think, I, I, I think that if we go forward right now with the, with those things up in the air, we might be making a mistake.
Uh, we certainly can speak with the, with the school committee. Um, again, it's a continuing appropriation. So, you know, not to, you know, belabor the point, but it's for the amount of dollars or money or cost that we need for the month of July. That's the whole intention here. So although they may have voted a 1/12 budget, I'm not even, I, I wasn't privy to the conversation. I wasn't there. I know I've said that. But they don't spend 1/12 of their budget in the month of July. So the intention of the 1/12 is not, it's apples and oranges with what the month-to-month budget presentation is with regard to the continuing appropriation. The whole point in this continuing appropriation is if you don't pass a budget or this continuing appropriation, by July 1st, government stops. Nobody goes to work. No public safety, nobody goes to work. Because we need an appropriation in order to go forward and pay payroll and pay expenses. And so that's the whole intention of continuing appropriation.
Budget, you call this an appropriation because.
That's correct. That's what it is.
Very specific.
Appropriation.
Um, now, my question, the, one of the, the questions that I asked you a few days ago was what got us here, right? What, what, what's our savings? What created this problem? Um, one of the major issues that you said to me was obviously we, we did not get marijuana, um, taxation based on the shutdown and based on, uh, the governor shutting down our dispensaries. But also, um, our collections. We didn't have, uh, you know, we, we weren't successful in, in getting our collections in on time, correct? Just, just correct me where I'm wrong.
Certainly, Counselor. So, so that is, that, all of those points that you just brought up will go to the outcome of the 2020 budget. So on the 2020 budget, where if everything had, with, with, where this pandemic had not happened, we would have had free cash at the end of the year. And so we would have been able to utilize that free cash, um, use some of it as the policy sets forth to put in our other post-employment benefit trusts. We could have used some of it for capital because we have some capital needs that may not meet the definition of capital in the sense of bonding for it, but something we could have spent money on, so one-time expenses. Because Counsel Kadim is correct, we wouldn't, we don't necessarily want to use, although there are a number of communities that are using some of their stabilization fund, which creates a structural deficit in their operating budget. So we don't want to do that. But all of those items that you just noted have a direct effect on the FY 20 outcome.
So now, i- in response to that, let's just say, you know, in the future, we have another problem like this come down the line. Um, is there anything in place right now? Or is there any kind of discussion in place right now that would prepare us for something like this down the road? So we're not in the same boat all over again?
Well, we had actually, um, and I think the mayor alluded to this a little bit when he, um, spoke this morning, uh, earlier this evening. But we had a meeting today with a group of individuals with regard to, um, IT and being able to improve our infrastructure and be more, um, user-friendly, if you will, and be more remote. So if this were to happen again, we'd have a number of individuals who could work remotely. Um, we've worked most recently, as, as you know, with, um, Bay Coast Bank to be able to collect our receipts. That all came very late in the process of, you know, March 10th or 16th, whenever the emergent, I think it was the 10th, when the governor announced the emergency. We weren't prepared for working remotely. We weren't prepared for collecting remotely. Yes, we had the online collections. Yes, we have a Dropbox. But we weren't ready. And those are the things we're trying to do, even with some of the CARES money that's available, is look at the infrastructure that we have available for IT and improve upon it in case this happens again.
Okay, um, I, and I, I was waiting to hear from the counselors, uh, uh, Counselor Ponte and, um, and Counsel Kadim. I was waiting to hear from the counselors that were opposed to this because I wanted to see, uh, both sides of this. But, um, I, I think it's also fair to mention that, uh, Counselor Dion, um, in the earlier, uh, part of the, uh, agenda, came up with a, you know, came up with an idea to kind of do a comparison. Is that something that could be done? Because I think what it, what it can do is, is maybe, uh, accomplish one of the things that Counsel Kadim is asking for, an actual picture of what, what we have. Because he's 100% right. We haven't really had a, a, a clear picture. And I know that it's hard to give a clear picture with the, the way things are. But we have to have something. I, I believe we have to have something to compare in order to really make an informed decision here. Uh, maybe not everybody needs that, but I know, uh, I know that I would appreciate that myself.
Well, you certainly have the document, although we withdrew it from, um, being something that we would ask you to act upon. But you have the document that we submitted to you on May 15th, which is the complete budget. So you can see from that particular document where, um, uh, we were anticipating spending. You can see where the vacant positions are within the budget. You can see those items that are increasing as a result of, um, contractual. So, uh, you heard Paul Perlin speak earlier about contractual increases. We also have contractual increases in our budget. You can see those items as well. And you can see any department that was looking for, um, capital items within the operating budget back during that May 15th timeframe. Um, that budget gets developed starting in the month of January. Uh, most of the departments have submitted all of their requests and they've been vetted with the administration prior to the end of March. So what you're seeing there realistically is what the departments believe their needs are as well as what the governor had anticipated the state aid to be at that time. Now, I'm sorry, one more thing, um, Counselor Lee. The, the biggest increase, um, when you look at that May 15th budget was Chapter 70. The biggest concern is really not what's going to happen to the city's budget, but the biggest concern is what's going to happen to the school budget.
Yeah.
Because they were receiving, I believe, 13 million dollars in, um, the governor's presentation of the cherry sheet and what he believed his budget was going to be. Um, everyone at the school department will agree today that that's not going to happen. Um, the question will be, will they get level funded? Will they get some increase based on enrollment and other, um, elements of the foundation budget? It's, it's really difficult to tell. And even with them for the month of July, you know, they may have taken a vote, taking their budget, the 162 and dividing it by 12. Um, but that isn't necessarily what is going to happen. They too have the concerns about not laying off people unnecessarily.
Uh, Counsel President Ayeel.
Thank you, Counselor, uh, Counselor Dion.
Yes, thank you. Um, I have many thoughts. I hope you can bear with me for a minute. Um, I, I find it, you know, I, we've been told for quite some time now that we've been on a good ride and this ride wasn't going to last for forever. And then COVID came in and we aren't on that good ride anymore. I think we're at a time where we need to be fiscally prudent, fiscally responsible, like we've never been before. Uh, because obviously we don't know what the state aid is going to be. We don't know what the numbers are going to be. But I feel confident in the fact that I don't think that we're ever going to see the numbers from the state as high as we've seen them in recent times. Um, because things have been so lucrative, things have been so good. And I also find it difficult, how do we look at where we're going when we don't know where we are? It, within this conversation, there's been discussion about, well, we don't know where we are with the 2020 budget. And that's true. We don't know where we are. Yes, granted, we had, we had, uh, we, we might have fallen short on revenues, but we also didn't have to expend as much money as we did before. So we really don't in reality know what we will or won't have for free cash because we haven't figured that out yet.
Uh, Counselor Dion, that, that's not true. We have, we, we maintain up-to-date numbers within Munis. And we maintain up-to-date estimates or projections through the end of the year. We know exactly which areas we're going to have, um, deficit spending in if we need to deficit spend. Um, and we know exactly which areas are going to have, um, monies that will be turned back on the appropriation side. And on the revenue side, we know exactly where we are with regard to what we've collected to date. We know what we would normally collect during the month of June. Or we were doing this through May, but now we're into June. Um, we have only got two weeks left. We know exactly where we're going to end the year.
I, I think, I think Counselor Dion's point is that it's the, it's, it's the overall financial picture, Mrs. Sahadi, going into next fiscal year. We don't know where we're going in next fiscal year's budget. There's a lot of uncertainty, as there is with any budget. So I think Counselor Dion was trying to make the point of we, we don't have a clear picture. We don't have a clear visual. We don't have a, a, a clear outline or map or roadmap about where we're going next fiscal year. There's a lot of uncertainty. So I think that's what Counselor Dion was trying to, to point out. Counselor Dion?
That, and, and, and also, and, and also in terms of projections, um, you know, I know, I guess you shouldn't compare your household budget to a government budget, but there are some similarities in the respect that, you know, if I don't know for the next three months, if I'm going to go back to work, then I have to reconfigure my finances. I have to adapt them to the fact that I don't know what's going to be in my pocket and what I can afford. And obviously, the only way to balance a budget is you either increase taxes, fees, you cut expenses. But I think we need to, I think I agree that we need to look at our budget and how we're moving forward based on what we know we have and not what we hope we're going to have. And, um, Counselor Pereira did also agree that if we have three months, a full quarter, and we fall short, the result is going to be more devastating than if we try to sit down now and at least look at it a, and, and try to figure out what, the responsible path to get from here to there. So again, um, from, from my perspective, I just feel like if we have a comparison, if we can sit down, someday we're going to have to cut, we're going to have to adjust our budget. Because someday we're not going to have as much money from the state as we've had in the past. And so we're going to have to conform. We're going to have to change our way of thinking. And I, and, and I believe too, and I know we all keep hopping on it, but there is no doubt in my mind that trash can be, um, I don't know, uh, I know the word. It's, it's escaped me at the moment, but we, we can streamline it. I know there's waste. I know there's monies being spent that, that we can streamline it, that could save our budget a lot of money. I believe that. So I believe there are areas we can look at that, you know, we just, we just have to tighten our belts and we, and we have to approach our future responsibly. Um, I, I, I just don't know what else to say, but tha- that's just the way I see this picture. I, it, it's, you know, it's not a happy picture and nobody's happy that we have to go through this and make the, the tough decisions. But, um, like I say, I mean, even for myself personally, i- if you don't have the normal amount of revenue coming in, then you have to make adjustments. Uh, and, and, you know, and, and hope that there's more. And, and, and then you can, like they say, backfill or, um, I don't know. I, I, I think for my part, at the least, I think we should have a comparison. At the least, we should try to apply it both ways. I don't think this decision should be made tonight. Uh, with that, I yield.
Thank you, Counselor, uh, Peckham.
Uh, Mrs. Sahadi, just one other question because, uh, for some reason, public safety's been thrown out there. That word, or term, a couple of times. With the 1/12 or, um, just a budget in general, have there been talks about public safety layoffs?
There have not, at this particular point, because there are so many uncertainties, there has not been a discussion about layoffs in either one of the publics or any one of the three public safety departments, as I consider EMS a public safety department. They have, the police department has in particular, a number of vacancies. We have had conversations, or the mayor has had conversations with the new chief with regard to not filling some of those positions.
Can I ask what positions those are?
They're all patrolmen. They're all patrolmen.
Patrolmen's positions?
They're all patrolmen, yes. There may be one superior, but they're all patrolmen. We have also had discussions with Mrs. Coelho with regard to the union contracts that are open. The three union contracts that are open are police, fire, and Teamsters. And there's been discussions about being zeros. I mean, if, in fact, we don't get the state aid that we are anticipating, those contracts will need to be settled with zeros. If we get additional state aid, then when we go back to the table, there may be discussion about percentage increases.
Okay. All right, thank you. With that, I yield, thank you.
Any further questions from the council on the referral? Madam Clerk, we've been at it for about an hour on this, the motion before us.
The only motion, Counselor, which was made, seconded, and carried was the motion to waive the rules to allow Mrs. Sahadi to answer questions.
Motion to refer to Finance.
To refer this item to Finance?
Yes, sir.
Motion, where the Campa Chicos here? Hi. Showing up?
Showing up late for the party.
Okay, thanks for being here. There's a motion to refer to the Committee on Finance that is made by Counsel Peckham. Is there a second? Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
On the motion to refer to the Committee on Finance, any discussion on the motion? Counsel Kadim.
You're muted.
Counsel. I got to repeat myself. The thing I like to hear myself speak. Just to reiterate, I'm not going to be supporting this. I think we need to see level services, and we need to stop planning for that. To Counsel Deion's point, you know, you can equate this to your personal budget at home, and if you didn't know what your revenues were, you wouldn't continue to spend for the first two months or three months without planning for a worst-case scenario. And I don't think level services is a worst-case scenario. I think that's going to be a reality of the situation. So the fact that we could be prepared for level services, and we should be having those conversations to see exactly what those cuts look like, so that if we're not satisfied with the cuts, if we don't want to see police or fire being laid off, that there is time to go back to the table. Because when we get to two months or three months into this, and we're having these conversations, and we can't rectify a budget, it's just going to go month by month, and it's going to take longer than you folks understand what it's going to be. So we'll be faced with more cuts, and if not, we'll be plugging it with one-time monies. It is what it is, but I won't be supporting it.
On the motion?
On the motion to refer, Counsel Kilby?
Yes, just two quick questions. I don't want to bring Mary back down, but there's two things she said. I'm not saying she's misleading, but, you know, we have a lot of younger councils, which is great. But she stated, if she wants to come back, it's up to her, but I don't want to prolong the debate. She stated that if we don't pass a budget, the city, I think she said, is at a standstill.
July.
True, correct me if I'm wrong, Sean Kadim, Counsel Kadim, we'll revert to a 112th.
We got to approve a 112th.
Right, yeah, well, let's say that the votes aren't there to pass a budget. I mean, Ms. Sahadi's comment was, the city's just going to stop, we can't pay our bills, that's it.
That's correct, Counselor. If you don't pass a 112th continuing appropriation.
If we don't pass a proposed budget, a regular budget.
You don't have a budget in front of you right now. All you have in front of you.
We put on a 112th, right?
All you have in front of you is a continuing appropriation. You do not have a budget in front of you.
Which is the one we revert to a 112th budget.
It is the 112th budget, it's what we presented to you.
We're saying the same thing once again. I'm sorry to use that phrase all the time.
No, Brad, what you're missing is, is that if we, by the end of June 30th, you don't automatically revert to a 112th, you've got to actually approve a 112th. So government stops.
I'm sorry if I phrased it wrong. And number two, Ms. Sahadi, you also made a comment, with all due respect, that, I mean, using one-term monies is just an absolute, is not, we shouldn't do it. And I remember your proposal, when we got rid of the, some of us fought against it, but when we got rid of the purple bags, your proposal was filled with one-term money.
No, it wasn't. Counselor, it wasn't.
Come on, I'll show you my notes.
Counselor.
I'll show you my notes. It was your proposal as an alternative, as an alternative to $2.5 million was loaded with one-time money. I yield.
Counselor, it was not, we have not used stabilization or free cash in any budgets since I was employed by the city.
Do me a favor, don't lose your credibility like someone that you worked with in the past. That's what I'm hoping with all my heart. Do not lose your credibility. I yield.
Thank you, Counselor, Council Vice President LeBeau.
Thank you. I can't vote to support this tonight, I'll vote to send it to Finance. But we don't have anything else in front of us. Counsel President, you asked for them to prepare a level-funded budget?
I did in our meeting, yes.
And is that coming, Mrs. Sahadi?
Not at this time. After speaking with the Senator today and with our colleagues in other communities, we felt it was best, with all of the uncertainty, to just bring to you the continuing appropriation for the month of July.
So if that doesn't get a yes vote, then we have no, we have no other options?
Not currently before us. No, we don't have any other options right now, Madam Vice President.
That just backs us into a wall, but if you don't get the yes votes on this.
We have no other options, right?
And we have a.
It would essentially be, I would say, correct me if I'm wrong, anybody else, it would essentially be if the city, the administration were to present us a budget and we reject it, then they would go back to the drawing board. And they might go back to the drawing board with a level-funded budget. It's going to be up to the Finance team on what they're going to do. If the council rejects this item tonight, then there's currently nothing before us, and they will go back to the drawing board. Correct, Madam, Mrs. Sahadi?
I believe Counsel Kadim would probably know better than I. I think you can take this appropriation order and cut it, if you'd like. So if you feel that it is, it is not lean enough for the month of July, you're more than capable of cutting the appropriation. But at this particular point, that is what.
The city council always has had, in the last couple of years, since Counsel Kadim was president, the city council has the ability to reduce, reject, or approve. And what we don't know is if we have the ability to do that through this specific appropriation, which I guess we probably could, because this is exactly what we would be voting on overall. So if the council wanted to go down the route of reducing, rejecting, or approving this 112th budget, I'm going to take the position that that's something that we could do within our purview.
I believe that's correct, Counsel President. I yield.
Thank you. Counselor Peckham.
With all the information going around, I'm also not prepared to vote tonight, and that's why I referred it to Finance. My question is, with time restraints being the way they are, is it possible to hold either a special or emergency meeting with closer than 14 days out? Where both items can be put together, we can compare it, go over it, and make our best educated decision?
We have a meeting scheduled for the 23rd, Counselor, that is a joint meeting with the school committee. Madam Clerk, do you care to comment on that any further?
Eva, 14-day notice was required for the budget hearing.
Okay.
That was presented, has now been withdrawn.
So, Madam Clerk, in terms of fundamentals or policy here, there is currently no reason to essentially meet on the 23rd, because there's not that budget before us, it's been withdrawn, correct? So do the 14 days restart from when they resubmit us another budget?
No, the 14 days came into play because the council is required by charter to meet on the, to hold a public hearing on the mayor's budget submission of May 15.
Got it, okay.
That was scheduled for the 23rd to allow for the 14-day notice.
We're having that, just so the council knows, we're having that public hearing, and in that same meeting, we're also going to be having the joint meeting with the school committee, which we should have done already.
Okay, I yield, thank you.
Mr. President, the meeting on the 23rd for the public hearing is on the mayor's May 15th budget, which he has withdrawn today.
Correct, okay. I get it. So there isn't, are you telling me that there isn't a necessary reason to have a public hearing on the 23rd?
I would say, no, there is no reason to.
Let's just touch base with Cooperation Council tomorrow and get that in writing from them. Counsel Peckham, you yield?
I yield, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Kadim.
Thank you, Mr. President, this is tongue-in-cheek. Do you know what's going on?
I'm trying to piece it all together.
I'm just, listen, I've never seen anything like this before. So we've got a budget that has a public hearing that's been rejected. We're going to have a 112th sent over, but we're not going to talk about it. And at no point on June 9th are we going to talk about any specifics to a budget. So we're essentially being forced to go to a 112th budget.
You've outlined it as what the situation is currently before us right now, yes.
So if this isn't the biggest cluster that you've ever seen, then I don't know what is, because I've never been part of anything like this. And I've been part of some bad budgets where, you know, the council chamber has been completely filled. There has been significant layoffs on both city side, school side. I've seen nothing like this before. But in terms of the comment that was made by the administration, we're following suit with our colleagues. Who's, when you say our colleagues, who are our colleagues in terms of doing the 112th?
As of this weekend, when I was able to do a little bit of, and certainly, we're acting on our own, we're acting on what we have for knowledge. So we're not followers, but we are, certainly other communities are in the same situation in the sense of looking at what's the most conservative way to approve or to present a continuing appropriation budget to you or a budget itself. I believe the city of New Beffid will be, and has already presented their 112th budget to their city council. I believe Brockton, Springfield, the city of Lynn. There are a number of cities, gateway cities, that rely heavily on state aid. And as a result of relying heavily on state aid, they have chosen to present a month-to-month budget as opposed to presenting a budget with uncertainties in it.
So can I just, can I just ask that we look to the north of us on Route 24, and maybe we should just kind of mimic what the city of Taunton has done? They just took a very conservative approach and passed a level services budget.
They did, Counselor, and they also used $2.5 million of free cash to balance that budget.
That's fine, so we can have that conversation as a council if we want to use 2.5. At least they had a conversation about level services. You know, so that's just, that's just my take. I'm not going to be supporting this.
Thank you. Hearing, Council Vice President LeBeau?
I just have a question for the clerk. Madam Clerk, we've already satisfied the charter, correct? The May 15th budget that was presented, we scheduled a public hearing. Even if that's rescinded, if they were to present a level-funded budget, we don't need to have another 14-day waiting period, do we?
No.
Okay.
No.
Okay, thank you, I yield.
Thank you for that point of information, Counselor. Any further discussion on the motion to refer to the Committee on Finance? Letting you know, I also will not be supporting the motion to refer. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, on the roll call to refer to the Committee on Finance.
Counselors Kadim?
That would be a conservative no.
Deion?
No.
Kilby?
Yes.
La Libby LeBeau?
No.
Lee?
No.
Peckham?
Yes.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Pereira?
You're muted, Counselora Pereira.
No.
And President Ponti?
No.
The motion fails.
Is there another motion before?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that we refer this 112th budget back to the mayor and have him put together a level-funded budget based off of FY '20 state aid.
Motion made by Counsel Kadim, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Deion, discussion on the motion. Hearing none, roll call.
Counselors Kadim?
Yes.
Deion?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Excuse me, La Libby LeBeau?
Yes.
Lee? Peckham?
Yes.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Pereira?
No.
President Ponti?
Yes.
Excuse you.
I would get you a glass of water, but we're Zooming. Careful, I spit mine out a little while ago. Next item on our agenda, Madam Clerk, when you have a moment.
What was the vote, was that, I'm sorry, I wasn't?
It was unanimous, 9-0.
No.
It was 8-1. 8-1.
8-1, Counselora Pereira, no.
What do you have?
Thank you.
Good lord. Item number five is a communication from the mayor and orders requesting the approval of five-year contracts for school bus transportation.
Question quickly.
Motion, is there a motion?
Question, please.
Is motion to approve has been made by Counselora Pereira, is there a second? We need a second for discussion, counselors.
Okay, second with a question?
Seconded by Counsel Kilby. On the approval, Counsel Kilby, on the adoption, Counsel Kilby.
There was discussion due to the closing of schools with regard to our bus companies, you know, reducing their rates. So I would ask, I don't know if Kenny's still there, who's responsible for this, but.
Counsel Kilby, would you like a motion to waive the rules? Mr. Pacheco is with us.
I know we're going long here, but yes, yeah.
The rules has been made by Counsel, seconded by Counsel Deion, roll call. On waiving the rules.
To waive the rules, Counselors Kadim?
Yes.
Deion?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
La Libby LeBeau?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peckham?
Yes.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Pereira?
Yes.
President Ponti?
Yes.
Counsel Kilby, on the floor.
Thank you. I'll wait for Kenny to come down. Well, I was going to say, wait for Kenny to come down. Before, I was going to ask Leo for the key, so. It's up to Pacheco, my friend. So, yeah, direct question, did we get concessions from these three bus companies due to the lack of our school year going forward?
So basically, the last day the bus companies were paid was March 16th. They have not received any payments for anything after the 16th. That was the last day of school. We have had conversation with some of the companies, some conversation more than, with them more than others. And to date, we have no settlements with any of the companies. And we have one correspondence from one of the company's attorneys looking to negotiate. That's the only, that's the only update I have, unfortunately, on 2020's bus transportation.
So obviously, the contracts call for arbitration in these, you know, usually with these contracts, right?
Some of it, and basically, it's uncharted waters, there's no services delivered from the 16th on. So it's more of a, could be looked at as a reservation of the equipment if this was to come back in session, which we now know it's not. But if it would have come in back into, back to session, we would have hoped that the bus companies would have been there to provide the services. There's a lot of different angles that different communities are looking at this. We still are not finished with it, and I don't think that that's, we're going to have answers anytime soon. We're basically looking at what the bus companies are receiving in stimulus money, in federal money, to help them out that way. And once we have that information, then obviously, we'll have a clearer picture as to where we can move forward on behalf of the city. And ultimately, it would come back to the mayor and city council for a final approval of any payment.
These are multiple-year contracts with all these vendors?
So the new contracts are all five-year contracts. We have one that you approved a meeting or two ago. These are three more contracts that we're looking for, five-year contracts on. And we have one outstanding IFB that is going to be opened in a couple of weeks, and that is for the final portion of our transportation as a whole.
Okay, well, I don't want to cross lines with regard to the school committee's jurisdiction, so, I mean, how does that negotiation work? I mean, that's all through Attorney Assad and?
It'll be through Attorney Assad, we will obviously. It'll be through Attorney Assad. We will obviously, um, the, the state, DESI, directed, um, communities to work together in a regional approach. If, for instance, um, a half a dozen communities were using Tremly, then they felt that maybe that one representative would, would speak on behalf of all the communities, bring it back to each of the communities to see what they thought, gather ideas, um, and to move the process along, so that if New Bedford settled with, um, a company like Tremly's at an amount, then maybe Fall River would be interested in the same amount and, um, reduce the legwork. Um, that hasn't happened across the board yet. Um, there's been a lot of conversation, but it hasn't happened yet.
Yeah, so from what I'm hearing, um, they, they're not bending. I mean, I, I, I'm not in that, obviously, that business, but, um, I'm sure the costs are down. Employees, wear and tear in their vehicles, et cetera. Um, but I'm not gonna throw a hypothetical at you, saying, God forbid, what if the school systems, the school system doesn't open, um, in, in September? I hope we, I hope we do, so I'm not gonna ask that question, Ken. But, um, okay, um, if any of my colleagues have a question, but I, I thought, um, we would be getting a, a substantial giveback back to the city. I yield.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Deion?
Yeah, Mr. Pacheco, I, I have a question. Um, in terms of this, these five-year contracts, um, it's been brought up and, and it's, and it's legitimate. You know, are, are the number of students allowed to be on a van or a bus gonna be reduced? Uh, the odds are it probably will happen. Um, is there anything within these contracts to address that if that happens? If we approve these, these five-year contracts, and then the school year begins, and then we have this new set of, of regulations stating that a seven-passenger van can only carry two or three students now? Obviously, that's gonna affect the bottom line. Will you be coming back saying, okay, we have a problem? We have to make two runs a day, or we have to use, uh, extra buses or extra vans? Has, is there anything in place to address those issues? Or are we gonna approve these contracts and then hit that stone wall down the road?
So, the short answer, uh, the short answer is, is that we, we do have, um, an article in the contract and the IFB as the bidding process, um, that would allow us to now have that negotiation piece with the bus companies. Um, it's, they, they agreed to it. Um, they actually suggested it. It was put into the, into the IFB as part of the bidding process for the five-year contract, and that's one piece that we have. However, um, as, as you know, every single directive from the governor's, uh, office or from the, uh, from DESI, from the Department of, uh, Secondary Education, that, that is always, um, the conversation always starts with, as of today. You know, as of today, this is the regulation. So, um, hypothetically, if we can only put two people on a bus, that's not our biggest problem. Our biggest problem is the, the place where those students are going. How are they gonna handle the social distancing? How are they gonna handle all the safety precautions? So, it is one part of everything we're going to do, but there are a lot of different ideas going around the state about how we would handle this. Um, and everything, again, is in the planning stage and, and, and we are not, um, we are not ready to, to basically implement anything because of the, the fact that every two weeks, we're getting some updates as to what we can do and what we can't do. Some of the directives where we're gonna take temperatures, um, of students as they walk in the door in September. And that directive is already gone. Um, so we're not quite sure how tight these regulations are gonna stay. And that would, again, would determine the buses. So for me to say that, um, we don't have enough buses, to be totally honest, if we can't social distance in the schools without reducing the amount of students that show up every day, we're gonna have a problem, and that's gonna be where it starts. How many students are gonna show up at a particular school every single day? And that's gonna determine how many buses we need. Because if half the students would go on, let's say, week one, and half the students would go in on week two, we've cut our transportation needs in half theoretically. However, now our bus, for instance, if a bus held 40 students, now it would only hold 20, because the other students are staying home for a week. So basically, an A week and a B week kind of setup. Because there is no way that we can put 800 students in a school like Viveras and do social distancing. We may be able to do 400 students in Viveras and do social distancing. We may be able to do 1,000 students in Durfee instead of 2,000 students. So the number of students going to the school is dictating everything. And that's also gonna dictate our transportation. I feel that there are a lot of parents who are going to opt out of transportation, that can opt out of transportation and drive their students to school. One more hazard they don't have to feel that they are subjecting their child to. That's another possibility. And, and obviously, there are some students who may not go back to school, because that may be what the parent is feeling, like, I'm going to do this remote for as long as I possibly can. So we're wrestling with all of that stuff at the department, weekly, sometimes daily meetings about justice, these items. But what I, what you have before you is a five-year contract, um, that is going to give both the city side and the school department stability for the next five years. And with that, besides price stability, it will be a contractor who knows exactly what they're doing every year, barring any kind of changes we make with COVID. So, that short answer that I promised you is, we have an ability to negotiate any issues we have. But, um, I don't know what those issues are right now. And I don't know if we need 15 more buses, 20 buses, 30. We run 167 buses to do our transportation. I don't know how many more it would take. I'm hoping that we solve the A problem, which is attendance in school, which will allow us to solve this problem that I, I'm calling B. And, um, and that's really the best I can, I can get you to that.
So I guess that leads me to two questions. Um, so one would be, what's the time? Is there a timeline on approving a contract? Like, in other words, like, you know, okay, you have 30 days, you know, this is, this, this agreement is valid as long as you, uh, approve it within 30 days or something like that. Is there a time limit on this?
I, I don't think there's a time limit. Currently, we, we try to get everything down to within 30 days, bid openings, um, things like that. We also wanna give these bus companies an opportunity to buy equipment, or if they need buses. Put ordering buses today is probably a very difficult thing, because one of the factories may have shut down during all of, all of, uh, of the pandemic, and, and maybe only ramping up now. There may be tons of, uh, companies that are, that are looking to buy buses. So, I think time is of the essence. I can't tell you whether or not, my, my biggest concern is that if we drag our feet too long, some of these bus companies may go elsewhere. This is a great contract for all of them, I think, and it's a great contract for the city. But, um, everybody needs a sure thing, and, and if we drag our feet too long, my fear is I won't have buses in September if I need them. So, thus, why I'm here for this is, is, is that reason why I, I have not, I, I really can't wait for the state to make all the decisions they need to make, because I, I think that this is, um, right now, this is pretty important for us to get this, uh, this put away. And, and there's a lot of other things that the, the school department, along with the city, is gonna have to deal with. Um, and this is, um, one that I think we have an answer to with these contracts, and I think that, um, financially, um, it will give us stability over the next five years.
So we have a joint meeting with the, with the school department on the 23rd. Um, in your opinion, would two weeks be too long?
Um, I don't, I don't think it's too long. I, um, the issue is, is I don't think much is gonna change in two weeks. So I don't think I'm gonna have more answers for you in two weeks. I don't think that the state is ready to say that the kids are not gonna wear masks or that we're gonna go from 10 to 20 kids in a classroom, um, or, you know, uh, some other square footage design number that they'll come up with. I don't know how much is gonna change in the next two weeks. Um, my fear is that nothing. And then, you know, I've, I've taken two weeks away from the bus company's, uh, ability to order buses. Nobody's gonna order buses, $100,000 a bus or $80,000 a bus, um, on a promise that the city wants them. So if they have it in writing, they're not gonna do that, which means they're gonna order their buses late. And for some companies, um, that'll be no issue. They probably have already ordered buses just because that's what they do. Um, but for other companies, they will be waiting for a consigned contract in order to do what they need to do.
Okay. Thank you. With that, I yield.
Thank you. Counselor Pelletier?
Kenny, uh, I noticed one of the bids come in.
Yes.
And it was like $400,000 cheaper than the other bid.
Yes.
And it doesn't seem like they would get the contract, for, for what reason?
So that contract was, um, both of the contracts of that particular piece were rejected. So it was, uh, special education. That's the one that we just put back out to bid. Um, the low bidder, um, did not, did not provide all of the information that we needed to make the decision. There was a lot of items missing. We call them critical items and non-critical. So if they forgot to, a document from the state, saying that they were a, a valid corporation, um, that we didn't consider that critical, because we could get that information ourselves. What we felt critical was bonding ability. What we felt was critical items was financial statements, uh, from previous years, and the ability to, um, perform the work based on their work, their workforce and their equipment. So we rejected that bid for 400,000 less. Now, the $400,000 bid, we felt, the one that was over that particular person, we felt that bid was too high. It didn't fall into the numbers that we would like to present to the city for an overall budget. So we threw out both bids and we put it back out to rebid. And that's what we're waiting for right now. That's the last piece of this bus puzzle, uh, that we're putting together.
Do you think the same two companies are gonna bid again?
I think there may be a third that may bid, but I'm not positive. There could be four. I'm hoping there's 10, to be totally honest. I want the best price for the city. I, 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 I look at things a little different than, than a lot of people do, but, um, hometown advantage for the city of Fall River, if you're looking for a hometown advantage, then it's very easy. Bid it that way. Okay, the, we cannot, we cannot look at someone's work that they've done in the past as the only criteria to hire them. And we also can't, just because they're from Fall River, hire them automatically if they, we don't know they can produce. So as, as we look through these bids, my job was to make sure that we were getting everything we needed and that the company was gonna be able to perform. And I didn't feel that the bids that came in were in the best interest of the city. So they went back out, and I'm hoping the second time around is a charm.
All right, that sounds good. Uh, that theory, I guess, I don't know where I heard it from. I don't know, it was Fall River, it was around in towns or whatever. Uh, they would have the kids go in three days, and they had the kids go in the two days, and the next week they'd switch. So they would get five days of schooling every two weeks. Is that something that you looked into?
We're looking at all different kinds of scenarios. Remember that when they're not in school, they're gonna be on the computers. They're gonna be remotely learning. So, w- we are, um, we're getting very good at what we do with the remote learning, and, and we feel that we're gonna have to put a package together in order to make this work. We're not gonna be able to accept all the students at one time, at least not maybe in September. And we're gonna have to come up with some kind of plan. We haven't nailed down which plan that is. We're honestly thinking that the Department of Education will come up with a plan for everyone, because they're gonna want this standardized across the state. And everyone will have to, um, to abide by that plan. So we are, we are moving forward with a whole lot of things in our buildings and, uh, with technology. Um, but we're moving at, at a, a slower pace than we'd like to, because we don't wanna do things twice.
Right. These three companies, if they were to get the contract, and do you foresee them saying, hey, uh, we can't do it for that? Or, uh, a different plan? That's it. That's the money that they're getting. That's it, right?
This is the money they're getting. So, for, for instance, Counselor, I, I can't say that if I have to add 10 buses on, that I'm getting those, because I'm a nice guy, I'm gonna get those 10 buses at the price that I paid for some of these other buses. Yeah. There is no freebies, you know, that are going out here. They're, they're going to have to change the way they do business, just like we are. So the sanitization on those buses, um, all of that cleaning that they're going to be doing on a regular basis. I'm sure those numbers that you see in front of you are reflecting that already, but I can't be positive, um, right now, that we're not going to get hit with more buses. My, I am going to do everything I possibly can to avoid that. We have a lot of things that we're talking about, about changing bell schedules to do more tiering with the buses. There's a lot on our plate. And, and we're actually trying to, um, head off some issues that we, we know will be coming up ahead of time. And, um, we're looking forward to a start in September. We're hoping that, um, we do have kids in our schools, um, where they belong.
Well, here's, here's the thing, you know, you talk about, uh, the water rates that they're going up and, uh, try to do whatever we gotta do to satisfy, uh, uh, the people with the water and the service and everything else. And, uh, now we got the bus companies. It's not like it's gonna go up, and the people, they're gonna have to get it. But it goes up a lot compared to say, like, the water department, look, we're gonna go up here, and the other taxes, two and a half, it's gonna go up. But the school, it just throw a figure out, and that's it. We gotta pay it. And it comes up to a lot of money. Uh, this thing could cost three, four, five million dollars more. And, but, you know, it's, it's tough. We got a tough job. We're gonna send the kids to school. We try to find the right thing, uh, to do. But the people, again, are gonna have to pay for that service, as every other service in the city. So that's what we're up against. It's a tough job. Uh, and we'd like to see the final, uh, draft of, uh, A budget or, uh, a budget for one month, two months, three months. And, uh, you know, I'm on a side of, uh, seeing where the money's coming from. Uh, so, to me, uh, one, one quarter, uh, month by month, I think it's the way to go right now. Uh, you know, I don't agree with all my colleagues, but, uh, we gotta see what's gonna happen. But we gotta do it soon. I mean, the city's gonna run, uh, like they say, if nothing's in the right perspective by July 5th, where are we going? Nobody works, nobody gets paid, so, uh, we got a lot of things on our plate and a lot of things to do. And, uh, we just hope for the best. With that, do what you gotta do, Kenny. Get these kids, kids to school, so they can get a good education.
I'm trying.
Well, I yield. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, anything further? Any other questions? Hearing none. There's a motion to adopt that has been made and seconded. Hearing no further discussion. Roll call.
Uh, Mr. President, just for clarification, is this, will this be for all three orders?
Uh, yeah, that's correct. Motion for A, B, and C.
Okay. On adoption, Counselor Kadeem?
Yes.
Deion?
Uh, yeah, unmute yourself, Counselor, Deion?
Sorry, yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
LaLiberty LaBeau?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peckham?
Yes.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Pereira?
Yes.
President Ponti?
Yes.
Item number six is a communication from the mayor and an order to accept the gift of appliances and furniture from American Freight to the Fall River Fire Department.
Motion to accept, yes.
Motion to adopt has been made by Counselor Kilby, seconded by Counselor Peckham. Discussion, Counselor Pereira.
I just, um, I just wanna amend that motion that we also send a letter to American Freight to thank them.
Yeah, we can, uh, Madam Clerk, motion's not necessary, but can you please make sure that we get a letter at Counselor Pereira's request? Very good. Motion has been made, uh, to adopt and seconded. Counsel will send a letter. Has been made and seconded. Hearing no further discussion. Roll call.
Adoption, Counselor Kadeem?
Yes.
Deion?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peckham?
Yes.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Pereira?
Yes.
President Ponti?
Yes.
Item seven is the Planning Board's recommendation as it relates to the HD Zone request for the Adams House on Highland Avenue.
It'd be appropriate, it's, it's the usual cost of business when we get Planning Board recommendations to place on file. Motion to accept and place on file has been made by Counselor Kilby, seconded by Counselor Pelletier. Discussion. Hearing none. Roll call.
Counselor Kadeem?
Yes.
Dion?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
La Libby LeBeau?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peckham?
Yes.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Pereira?
Yes.
President Ponti?
Yes.
I'm sorry, abstained. That's item seven. I'm going to abstain from that vote. My apologies.
Item number eight, Committee on Public Works and Transportation, at a meeting held on May 19th, voted three A's to recommend the accompanying resolution be granted leave to withdraw. It's related to public safety concerns regarding lighting in neighborhoods.
Motion to adopt, committee's report. Motion to give item leave to withdraw and adopt the committee's report has been made by Counselor Kilby, seconded by Counselor Dion. Discussion. Hearing none. Roll call.
Counselor Kadeem?
Yes.
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
La Libby LeBeau?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peckham?
Yes.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Pereira?
Yes.
President Ponti?
Yes.
Item number nine is miscellaneous traffic ordinance for passage through second reading and enrollment.
Motion to pass second reading enrollment?
Motion to pass through second reading and enrollment has been made by Counselor seconded by Counselor Peckham. Discussion. Hearing none. Roll call.
Counselor Kadeem?
Yes.
Dion?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
La Libby LeBeau?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peckham?
Yes.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Pereira?
Yes.
And President Ponti?
Yes.
And item number 10, proposed ordinance for passage through second reading and enrollment. This is the flood district boundaries and base flood elevation data.
Motion to pass through second reading enrollment would be appropriate.
I'll make that motion.
Motion seconded by second reading and enrollment has been made by Counselor Dion, seconded by Counselor Peckham. Discussion. Roll call.
Counselor Kadeem?
Yes.
Dion?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
La Libby LeBeau?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peckham?
Yes.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Pereira?
Yes.
President Ponti?
Yes.
Whereas the restaurants in Fall River have been requesting outside dining in front of their establishments from Memorial Day through Columbus Day to provide increased services and add to the activity and ambiance of their establishment since 2014. And whereas in recent months, the COVID-19 pandemic has adversely impacted the ability of many local restaurants to maintain cash flow and remain a viable business in our city. And whereas the governor has established an order to allow for outside dining and seating at the start of Phase Two of the Massachusetts reopening efforts. And whereas allowing for outside dining and seating would greatly assist Fall River restaurants to remain in business. Now therefore be resolved that the City Council Committee on Economic Development and Tourism convene with the Director of Code Enforcement, Director of Traffic, City Planner, a representative of the Police Department, a representative of the Commission on Disability, a representative of the Licensing Board, Cooperation Council to discuss and assist in the immediate development of policies and guidelines that outside seating and services be allowed at these establishments immediately, provided that configuration of seating does not prohibit public access in front of the establishment and that these businesses be allowed to immediately utilize half of the site or the designated area. And be a further resolve that once protocols are developed, a proposed ordinance will be submitted to the Committee on Ordinances and Legislation.
Your motion to adopt?
Again.
Motion to adopt has been made by Counselor Kilby, seconded by Counselor Peckham. Discussion. The sponsor of the resolution, Councilor Pereira, would like to speak on this.
Well, I think it's, I've talked on it a lot in 2014. Takes a while to get things through sometimes, but I just think putting everybody at the table together and coming up with a solution. There's been a couple of things that have happened and, you know, one, the right hand doesn't know what the left hand's doing sometimes at City Hall, so I just think having a meeting with everyone, all the parties together, to come up with a plan that's going to work. And trying to do it as quick as I can because of the governor's orders and how long people can stay open. But with that, I yield. We'll have a meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Dion.
Yeah, I, you know, agreed to co-sponsor this with Counsel Pereira because I've been working with some establishments already who are very concerned about having outdoor seating to compensate, to hopefully compensate for their losses or at least make life a little easier for them. I'm glad the governor took the steps he did to make it more immediate. Some of them are still a week or two away from being able to have everything they need outside. But I think we can use this as a learning tool so we can establish, you know, what, what the right thing to do is, what the wrong thing, what works, what, what, what won't work. So hopefully by next season, we'll have everything in place so that anybody who has the viability can have outdoor seating on a seasonal basis moving forward. So the only thing they may have to do is every year, once they're approved and once they've been successful, that every year they would just have to obtain the seasonal license. And then they'll be good. Other communities do it. People enjoy being outside, people enjoy eating outside. And I don't see why we can't do it in Fall River. With that, I yield.
Thank you. Counselor Pelletier?
Yeah, you know, just been dragging on for a long time. And here we are, before you know it's 4th of July and, and October's coming up and I don't see this getting settled too fast. But, you know, I think the mayor should step in and say, hey, you guys, do what you've got to do and we'll go out there, we'll if there's any infractible, but, you know, with the amount of people that are going to sit on a meeting, they can talk about it for a month and it'd be nothing done. But to get anything done this year, they should say, yeah, if you've got room to do it, if there's a problem, we'll let you know, correct it. So I think that's where we should go, so these guys can get started and stop making money for themselves. I yield.
Thank you, Counselor. Hearing no further discussion. I want to just take a moment to acknowledge Counselor Pereira and Counselor Dion on this. I know that Counselor Pereira has been working on this since 2014, which is a really long time. But I, I think that we have the council and the administration in place that is ready and prepared to start working on something like this. So I'd like to acknowledge you both. You all have also been receiving a number of calls as well from business owners and restaurants as well. And I think your work needs to be commended on this and a very thorough resolution, to Counselor Pereira's point, bringing everybody to the table, really makes this even stronger. So I personally like to acknowledge both for your work in getting that resolution together. Motion has been adopted and seconded. Hearing no further discussion. Roll call.
On adoption, Counselor Kadeem?
Yes.
Dion?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
La Libby LeBeau?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peckham?
Yes.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Pereira?
Yes.
President Ponti?
Yes.
Whereas citizens in the city of Fall River have expressed concerns with the current events regarding racial inequalities, protesting accountability and calls to end violence. Now therefore be resolved that the City Council Committee on Public Safety convene with a representative of the Board of Police and the Police Chief to discuss proactive strategies and policies to address these concerns.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt has been made by Counselor Peckham, seconded by Counselor Dion. Discussion, sponsor of the resolution. Counselor Lee?
Thank you. We've talked about it earlier today, but I just can reiterate that most people in our community do not collectively see racism every single day. But we start to see it when things get escalated, escalated, you know, in, in many different ways. And I think it's our responsibility, it's the police department's responsibility and our community's responsibility to start discussing this and from, from the police perspective to be, what the key word in that resolution is proactive. So that way we're not at the escalated point anymore and we're able to have things in place that, that hope, that hopefully will suppress any kind of escalation and, and doing it the right way. Not, not just with any type of physical force from the police department, but also from, from a standpoint of reaching out to the community and, and making sure that voices are heard. And if there are any discrepancies or if there's just straight up violations that are occurring from that perspective, that we have things in place to address it and people can see real results from it. So I, that, that's what I'd like to do. The only thing is that I'm not on the, I'm not on the Public Safety Committee, so I won't exactly be able to directly have that conversation unless I'm able to sit at the table with them or maybe I just give them a list of what I, what I would like to see specifically in, in that conversation. I yield.
Thank you, Counselor.
You picked on me. One of, one of the things that I would say to Counselor Lee is the police board, the police commission, I can't tell you the last time they met. I can tell you two people that I know that are on the police commission. But one of the things that you might want to do, or the Committee on Public Safety, maybe a conversation with the mayor, is that an active board? What do they do? Have their terms expired? And maybe you need to look at putting people on the police commission that want to be on the police commission to have knowledge of, of that type of thing. The other thing is, I did put a resolution, that's an ordinance committee, that we look at all the boards and committees that we have and people's terms that have expired. What are the jobs of every board or commission that we have? Why do some boards and commissions get paid while others don't get paid? I think that we need to start looking at that through the ordinance committee. But I think to bring stuff to the forefront, the only way things are going to be resolved is if there's open discussion. But I think you're on the, the right track with that. Also, if you're the one who filed the resolution and it's going to committee, you can be at committee to talk about the resolution because you were the sponsor of it. So with that, I yield. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Kilby?
Yes, once again, Linda is way ahead of me, but absolutely right. In, in a larger, in more larger cities, but I consider Fall River a large city, they have very active, Counselor Lee, very active police review, review boards that independently review police conduct. And it's, it's not uncommon. It's not uncommon. Like Counsel Pereira said, we, we, we do have, I think we still have a, a police board, but it's not a truly a review board. So I think it's a great idea, great idea. You're on the right track with this one, my friend. I yield.
Thank you. Anything further from the council? Counselor Lee?
Just to respond and also to the, to the body as well. I believe New Bedford just recently had a city council meeting where they were discussing, if not voted on, body cameras for, for police officers. And, you know, those are the type of things that I think we can bring to the table to, to, in that conversation, in that discussion. And also some type of, some type of mechanism for citizens that call the police department. And you remember, I hope you remember, one of our first resolutions early on in January when we had that woman who owned, who owned that building and was getting some really discouraging messages from, from some of the phone calls that she was getting, telling her to, you know, that she, she could end up dead if she keeps on, you know, riling up her neighbors or things like that. Somewhere like where there's a mechanism where they can, where people who are calling the police department and not getting, you know, what they, what they need from those phone calls, like I, I just had a phone call yesterday about the fireworks that I just recently heard out my window a little while ago. And he made a phone call to the police department and police department dispatch told him, there's nothing we can do about it. And kind of just like, that was it, and just kind of dismissed them. If there's any kind of mechanism that we can provide, any kind of platform that we can provide for these people that are just simply not getting what they need from, from, you know, these phone calls or these complaints. So that way, so that way we can address them. Because I think if we have a discouraged population of people that don't, that, that won't even bother to pick up the phone anymore to contact the police department, now we're at a real, now we're at a problem, you know? So I want to, I want to be able to have some real productive, not just conversation, but results of those conversations that people can tangibly see and, and, and know that we're trying to do what we can to make a safer community, but also to, 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 to connect to, to the people, between the police department and, and the citizens that, you know, that they serve. So that's, that's all I have. I yield.
Thank you. Counselor Peckham?
I just want to say, I totally agree with the resolution. And you filed it at the perfect time, the same day that we appointed a fantastic chief. I think something positive is going to come out of this. As far as the body cams, definitely a discussion that, that should be had in today's day and age. And thank you for filing this. I, I appreciate it. With that, I yield.
Thank you. Anything further? Hearing none. Motion has been made to adopt and seconded. Hearing no further discussion. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
On the motion to adopt, Counselor Kadeem?
Yes.
Dion?
Yes.
Kilby? La Libby LeBeau?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Yes.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Yes.
Pereira?
You're on mute, Linda.
Yes.
And President Ponti?
Yes.
Thank you.
Whereas during the May 20th, 2024 Fall River Redevelopment Authority meeting, a proposal was made by the Executive Vice President of Bristol County Economic Development Consultants to the Redevelopment Authority to streamline the contracting process of the city pier projects regarding sidewalks and lighting with the city of Fall River. Whereas the Redevelopment Authority voted on and approved the proposal. Therefore be it resolved that the City Council Committee on Finance convene with the Executive Vice President of Bristol County Economic Development Consultants and a representative of the Fall River Redevelopment Authority to discuss this process.
Your motion? Motion to adopt? Is there a motion for discussion? Is there a motion? Can you guys hear me?
I, I just have, I have a question.
We need, I would love to entertain a question, Counsel, but we need to-
Okay, a motion, a motion to adopt, but-
Motion to adopt has been made by Counselor Pereira, seconded by Counselor Pelletier. Discussion, Counselor Pereira.
I can ask my question. Does any of this money come from the city? That was to do any of this? I mean, if we're having somebody come to finance, was any city money used on this project?
Counsel, I'll, I'll open the floor to Counselor Lee.
So this is, this was the, that was one of the, part of the reason why I put this together was there was a, there were a few questions coming my way from, from people who watched this, this meeting and asked me about whether or not there was any kind of money being exchanged in the process. I had a direct conversation with the executive president, Vice President. And he, he discussed to me that this is not, this is not a money transfer situation. So I actually presented the, the idea to Council President as to, just for clarification, this would probably be very, a very quick conversation to have. But just to get it on record that city money is not involved in these contract streamlining processes that he was describing. I, I anticipate that counselors like such as Kadeem and maybe some other more experienced counselors have seen this happen before. Have seen works, you know, contracts being streamlined. However, I think not everyone in the public understands that and understands that process. And they were, they wanted some reassurance that city money was not being involved. So to your question, that's part of the reason why I put this resolution together, Counsel Pereira. I yield.
Counselor Pereira?
I just, I mean, I don't know that they would have to come before, is that Committee on Finance to discuss any of this?
I mean, it, it agreed, but I just wanted, when I spoke with Counselor Lee, I think he wanted to have a pretty broad conversation and, and have the entire council present for this debate and for this discussion. And because it had to do with some financial aspects, he wanted to have it come through the whole council. And I mentioned that I would support that endeavor, so that's the other reason he, he filed this. this resolution that way.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor and there was a second.
There was. Motion has, to adopt has been made and seconded. Hearing no further discussion. Roll call.
On adoption, Counselors Kadim?
Yes.
Dion?
You, Council Dion, unmute.
I think I hold the record tonight for mute and unmute here. Abstain?
Kilby? Kilby?
Oh, you got me, Madam Clerk?
No, I think Council Lee.
Uh, Council Kilby.
Kilby, what's your vote?
Yes, he said.
Lee, uh, La Libby LeBeau?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peckham?
Yes.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Pereira?
Yes.
President Ponti?
Yes. Is there a motion to take items fourteen through twenty-five together? Motion to take items fourteen through twenty-five together, as been made by Councilor Kadim, seconded by Council Kilby. No discussion hearing. Roll call.
Counselors Kadim?
Yes.
Dion? Kilby?
Yay.
La Libby LeBeau?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peckham?
Yes.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Pereira?
Yes.
President Ponti?
Yes. Motion to adopt?
Second.
Motion to adopt items fourteen through twenty-five has been made by Councilor um Kilby, seconded by?
Yes.
Council Peckham. Discussion. Roll call.
On adoption of the orders, Counselors Kadim?
Yes.
Dion?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
La Libby LeBeau?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peckham?
Yes.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Yes.
President Ponti?
Yes.
Item twenty-six, our applications for the renewal of auto repair shop licenses.
Motion to renew?
Or motion to adopt and renew, as it made by Council Kilby, seconded by Council Peckham. Discussion. Roll call.
On adoption, Counselors Kadim?
Yes.
Dion?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
La Libby LeBeau?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peckham?
Yes.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Pereira?
Yes.
President Ponti?
Yes.
Item twenty-seven is auto repair shop renewal.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt has been made by Council Pereira, seconded by Council Peckham. Discussion. Hearing none. Roll call.
On adoption, Counselors Kadim?
Yes.
Dion?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
La Libby LeBeau?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peckham?
Yes.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Pereira?
Yes.
President Ponti?
Yes.
Item twenty-eight, our claims.
Motion to refer to cooperation council.
Claims to cooperation council has been made by Council Pereira, seconded by Council Peckham. Hearing no further discussion. Roll call.
Counselors Kadim?
Yes.
Dion?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
La Libby LeBeau?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peckham?
Yes.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Pereira?
Yes.
President Ponti?
Is there a motion to take items twenty-nine through thirty-three together? Motion to take items twenty-nine through thirty-three, city council meeting minutes has been made by Council Pereira, seconded by Council Peckham. Discussion. Hearing none. Roll call.
Counselors Kadim?
Yes.
Dion?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
La Libby LeBeau?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peckham?
Yes.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Pereira?
Yes.
President Ponti?
Yes. Is there a motion to approve items twenty-nine through thirty-three? Motion to approve has been made by Council Pereira, seconded by Council Peckham. Discussion. Hearing none. Roll call.
On approval, Counselors Kadim?
Yes.
Dion?
Yes.
Lee? La Libby LeBeau?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peckham?
Yes.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Pereira?
Yes.
President Ponti?
Yes.
Item thirty-four A, B, C.
Drain layers.
Motion to take uh, uh, motion to approve all drain layers on uh, uh, thirty-four A, B, and C has been made by Council Pereira, seconded by Council Peckham. Discussion. Roll call.
On approval, Counselors Kadim?
Yes.
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
La Libby LeBeau?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peckham?
Yes.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Pereira?
Yes.
And President Ponti?
Yes.
Item thirty-five is a communication from the Beta Group regarding the replacement of Weaver Street over Mass Coastal Railroad.
Motion to accept place on file.
To accept the place on file has been made by Council Pereira, seconded by Council Peckham. Discussion. Hearing none. Roll call.
Um, Kadim?
Yes.
Dion?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
La Libby LeBeau?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peckham?
Yes.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Pereira?
Yes.
And President Ponti?
Yes.
Item thirty-six is a communication from our camera regarding the FY twenty-one budget.
Motion to accept place on file.
Motion to accept place on files has been made by Council Pereira, seconded by Council Peckham. Discussion. Hearing none. Roll call.
Counselors Kadim?
Yes.
Dion?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
La Libby LeBeau?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peckham?
Yes.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Pereira?
Yes.
And President Ponti? The committee on finance at a meeting held on June ninth voted nine yeas to recommend the accompanying loan order be referred to the full council for adoption. This is the four million eight hundred fifty-eight thousand eighty-five dollars for phase twenty water system improvements.
Motion to adopt or action needed, taken? Someone?
Second.
Motion to adopt has been made by Council Kadim, seconded by Council Pereira. Discussion. Hearing none. Roll call.
On adoption, Counselors Kadim?
Yes.
Dion?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
La Libby LeBeau? Lee?
Yes.
Peckham?
Yes.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Pereira?
Yes.
President Ponti?
Yes.
The committee on ordinances and legislation at a meeting held on June ninth voted four yeas to recommend the accompanying proposed ordinance as amended be referred to the full council for action without a recommendation with Chair La Libby LeBeau absent and not voting. This is the proposed ordinance um regarding water rates.
Motion to deny.
Motion to deny has been made by Council Pereira, seconded by Councilor Dion. Discussion. Counselor Kadim?
Uh, just quickly, there was obviously a stalemate during committee. That's why it's coming out with no recommendation. Um, I just will state that, you know, me personally, I, I will, I will not be supporting this motion. I will be supporting the uh, the rate increases because I think those two um budgets are lean. Um, and we heard the um ramifications of making any cuts to level services in the water and sewer department. It was pretty significant. So I will be supporting um the rates moving up. I yield.
Thank you, Councilor.
Well, my opinion is opposite Counselor Kadim's opinion. I don't think that people can afford it. And when they say that we're going to get a water rate increase and it's only going to be twenty dollars more every quarter, it never happens. It's not that way. And what bothers me is, you know, you look at what does it cost for electricity at the water department, but yet nobody looks at solar power. They're buying properties in within city to fix drainage issues here and there. They're buying properties for a hundred and sixty thousand, a hundred and eighty thousand, a hundred thousand. I got a call just this week, Pierce Street, the, the water department bought a piece of property there. It's high with grass. There's branches that have fallen, weeds on the sidewalk. Come on. And then you want more money. Can't, you gotta take care of what you have. And if you're spending money on all these issues, and then I, we have that going to the real estate committee to try to um sell some of those properties. And we have the director saying, well, you know, uh, if we sell them, then it could be a detriment. There'd be a, a drainage problem there. Well, then if there's going to be a drainage problem, if you build a house there, then obviously you didn't do a good enough job figuring out the Danish, the, the drainage problem. And I, I can't say that I blame, you know, uh, any one particular person. But if you think of the history of this city and where you're building houses and how much money, you know, Joe and Jane taxpayer have had to pay to go and resolve problems that developers built properties, built homes in areas where there was a drainage problem, but yet water and sewer signs off on it. And then when the people have a problem, we're going back, spending a half a million dollars or better to repair these drainage problems. So I am not voting for an increase. You know, let them figure out a way to tighten their belts a little. You know, every project that they've had is over budget. Who's watching that money? They'll go into enterprise fund and get more money and then, oh, well, we'll just raise rates. So that's why I'm not voting for it. With that, I yield. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Counselor. Anything further, Counselor Dion?
Yeah, um, I have, I, I haven't been in favor of this since uh the beginning. Um, you know, we've had businesses that have taken such huge hits. They're trying to recoup. I think this is just going to hurt them further. Um, and it's true, you know, you start off with, you know, it's only going to be an extra twenty dollars a year or, or whatever the case may be. Um, it's based on three and point five people. If somebody has three children, you know, it, it isn't twenty dollars a year. It's a hundred and ten dollars a year. If somebody has a three family and there's children in those three, in that three family, you're looking at three hundred and thirty-two dollars a year. Um, so the impact is, is larger than, than I, than it seems to be on the surface. And I think, you know, just this year and, and with the way things are going and the struggles that everybody is having, I just, I just uh can't support this this year. With that, I yield.
Thank you, Council. Anything further? Council Peckham?
Um, I echo the sentiments of uh Council Dion and Council Pereira. Um, I've talked about the CSO project during my campaign, water, sewer. I, I don't think the uh taxpayer should uh bear the burden any longer. Um, they, there should be other areas, as Council Pereira stated, uh, property wise, where we can make some uh, ma- make some money without going to the taxpayer to uh, to further their burden. With that, I yield. I don't support it.
Thank you. Anything further? Hearing none. On the motion to deny that has been made by Council Pereira and seconded, roll call.
So in essence, we would be granting this ordinance leave to withdraw?
Right.
Um, Counselors Kadim?
No.
Dion?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
La Libby LeBeau?
No.
Lee?
Yes.
Peckham?
Yes.
Pelletier?
No.
Pereira?
Yes.
And President Ponti?
No.
The motion carries.
Mr. President, could I just uh ask through you? I, I know we just rejected the rates, but there's going to be significant cuts. I would just ask that the counselors that voted no just be prepared to, to make recommendation on cuts. That's, that's all.
Council Pereira?
Yeah, not a problem with making recommendations to cut, but making recommendations where people can get more money, such as putting solar panels up so that it cuts the cost of our electricity, such as when you purchase a property because you have to do some drainage work, then maybe you should sell that property so somebody can build a small home there and recoup some of the money that you've spent on taxpayers' money to go in and resolve problems. Maybe something like having the site plan review when a development is going on. If water and sewer is signing off on it, make sure they have enough water and sewer there to be able to build those homes, not have the taxpayers. That's, that's my thing, Counselor Kadim. It's not okay. We don't have this. Come up with the cuts. Let's look at what we're doing wrong that's creating the money that is being spent. If, if we look at how we can save money, that's the way to go. It's not how, where we can cut to keep spending the money. It's how can this city save money? That's my issue. With that, I yield. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Madam Clerk, just for point of information, um, the, what was the vote on giving the item leave to withdraw?
Five yeas, four nays.
Got it. Uh, Counselor Kadim, followed by Council Kilby.
Yeah, I just want to speak to uh Council Perry's arguments. I mean, that they don't, they don't make any sense with all due respect. Her, her issues are from an operational standpoint, not from a budgetary standpoint, right? So if you're upset that uh they're purchasing property to, to fix something and they gotta sell it, that's fine. But that's, that's one-time revenues that's coming in. Um, if you, if you don't like the fact that they're not working with the water and sewer department to make sure that there's enough water going into a, a building, again, that's not a budgetary situation. The fact of the matter is, is that when you start looking at the budgets that were put together, um, you looked at the, you look at the fixed cost increases and the mandates that we have on the federal, from the federal government and the EPA, you're going to have to go back and you're going to have to cut uh individuals and you're going to have to cut capital expenses and you're going to have to cut uh supplies. And that's all going to come back down with the, the EPA recommendations and, and, and guidelines to, to fix it. We've seen it before. We've heard Terry Sullivan say it a number of times that if you continue to cut the budgets, they're going to come down with the mandates that we're not going to be able to sta- uh to maintain. Now, I don't disagree with Council Pereira. Like, if, if there's, if there is things from an operational standpoint that need to be addressed, then those conversations should be had in, in Public Works Subcommittee with the administration at the table and start holding people accountable to just turn around and say that we're not gonna um, you know, support the rates. I mean, we just supported a four point eight million dollar uh infrastructure project, but we're not going to support uh the seven cents that's required to pay for it. We're, we're speaking out of both sides of our mouths a- as counselors. I, I understand what you're saying. You, you go put solar panels, that's going to generate some money. It's not going to generate enough money to, to make sure that that's sustainable. You know, there are, there are no other ways unless you can come up with some, some significant ways to, to really increase the revenues over a long period of time. Um, that's going to support this. I mean, the CSO is the CSO. It's, it, and we've got, we talked about it in ordinance. I mean, we've got a three hundred and fifty million dollar um, uh, uh, ballot question that came on from, from the city that everybody wants to see. And that's coming down the pike, right? That's over the next fifteen years or something like that, or twenty years, whatever the case may be. So the, the voters of the city voted for that and we're not properly going to fund these departments. And when you look at the increases, it was, it was a loss of free cash coming in, again, u- utilizing one-time monies, creating structural deficits. And this is not going to rectify itself. It's going to be difficult cuts. Uh, one of, one of the departments, I believe, was the, the water department going from fifty-two employees down to thirty-eight employees. That's the reality of the situation. So I understand that people don't want to have to pay the fees. I don't want to pay the fees. I don't want to have to pay additional water, water fees and, and sewer fees, you know, but unfortunately, we need to look at the operations of the city, where we're at, and what it's going to be like in the next couple of years based on ballot questions that have been approved and mandates that are coming down from the federal government. That's just the reality of the situation. And that, as counselors, if we're not going to support this, we need to make sure that we've got cuts for this fiscal year to be able to, to address it. And if that means we're going to go from a staff of fifty-two uh individuals down to thirty-eight, so be it. I mean, it's, it's what the council has chosen. But I, I'm just, I just request that we just be prepared when we, when we have these conversations at finance to make sure that we can, we can actually have the reduction. That's all.
My back of the wall as far as. My back, as far as, where did the four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars come from to purchase all the land? Came from the budget. Where did the over a million dollars to go and, and repair drainage issues? Where did that come from? From the budget. And you're right.
Supported it, though.
But you're right, the co- I wasn't on the council voting for these.
But it was a council vote, though.
I wasn't here for the sale of these, of these properties. I worked hard for that not to happen. But besides that, when you look at, and you just said it, the voters voted and yes, we're going to be paying on the new high school. How much more do you think people have in their pocket? I understand.
No, no, point, point of clarification. I was, I was talking about the, the, um, sewer mandate and the water mandate that we had. I forget if it was water or sewer, number one.
You know, and how many times have we tried? I believe you even went to Washington. How many times have we tried to get the federal delegation? Didn't Trump say he was going to give money for infrastructure? Maybe he will now. I mean, he, maybe he'll do what Jaisal did. Okay, wants to get elected again, get rid of bags. Maybe Trump wants to get elected again? Maybe he'll turn around and help us with our sewer project. I don't know. But, you know, that was a mandate that we shouldn't have had. And because we went to court, I was around back in those days, and because we went to court and we were mandated to do the CSO project, we have to do it. I agree, we have the twenty miles, we're redoing, uh, the, the pipes, we should be redoing the pipes. And I agree with you, if we're going to be redoing pipes, even on President Avenue, I've been by there, why aren't they coordinating? No, because then we spend more money. We're ripping up streets again. It, the right hand doesn't know what the left hand's doing lately. Drives me crazy. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Kadim?
Mr., Mr., uh, Mr. President, you know, I, I think we need to then, if we're, if we're gonna, if we're going to be consistent with our votes, then I think we need to take a motion to reconsider the loan order of, uh, four-point-eight million dollars for Phase Twenty Water System Improvements. Because that, that itself is, is like a seven-cent increase or some, something along the lines on, on the rate. So we're, we're saying that we're not going to increase the rates, but we're approving a four-point-eight million dollar project. We just, we just approved it. And I, I believe that was unanimous.
Look at the vote.
So I mean, if, if that doesn't, if that doesn't make the city council look like we're speaking out of both sides of our mouths, I don't know what do, what is. We just approved four-point-eight million dollars, which is going to, it was just going to require us to increase the rates, but we just shot down the rates that were presented to us. Makes absolutely no sense.
I want to vote.
It doesn't make any sense to me. It's just, I, I don't know.[1423.74]